I did. We talked about.
Like wearing out the.
After about ten minutes talking about everything else.
I gotta get the main reason I called you. Neil, Neil can make it my house.
Yeah, I suppose.
County shop. I said, I don't know if he's right there today. He said, oh, no, my dad, he said, he just says, no, I'll just call.
I got a couple of calls about the roads.
I would say.
With that rain and warm weather, really.
It took me a while longer, I think. I think it took it out on the top so much, and then that water couldn't go down any further.
And just made stop.
And it was just that top, just that drain that made stop out of it. You guys had a worse time for an inch or anything, I guess. I don't even know what we got. I don't know if I could buy an inch in that one bucket I dumped.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna rope it off and have a stellar personal. Might hit a couple of rocks.
Take some initiative to do that. If I really like that Lorraine and Rick would be on it because.
Okay, all right. So it's a board. I always have this little guide that I use. It's my body. And then I have these two things here that I use for why numbers have gone down.
I have some few trust fund question.
Thank you.
Does for that ten grand.
I'm not as prepared as I should be because I.
Yeah, I will take them.
I've lost my notes from my meeting last week. I know you guys like that when that happens, but.
Oh.
Hello, good morning. Oh, just going through someone getting prepped for the meeting.
How are you, Terry?
I'm okay. You had a busy weekend?
I did. Yesterday, we went up and turned. I thought, oh, there's a reason we don't have jobs. Watching sign his commitment letter. That's awesome, which was kind of fun because. It's gonna be good, you know, and everybody's like, well, that's a really religious school and you can't. I don't know if he's gonna be late for his curfew. He's got him out like a sailor. You know? Jean, bring that. I'm sorry. Are you guys done with this before us take it?
I need it.
Go ahead. We only had a hundred. Forty-five thousand increase margin or. Assess values this year.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, sir. I realize I take up more than my space today.
I know. That's why I sit over here.
I have a little desk back here.
It was actually.
I didn't think I was gonna become the paperwork queen. I guess I am.
I guess so. With the video file cabinet, you can slide underneath that bureau behind you or some small.
You come to my home and see my desk. It's actually clean. There's nothing on the top.
Oh, wow.
But I've got drawers and things underneath it.
One day I'll clean off the top. I figure that's when I retire.
My husband put anything on it.
All right. I get it. I aspire to have a. Having to start losing or losing employees because we can't cover it down the road.
That must be one of the hardest things to maintain as an interpreter.
They get tired of being a little man.
I think part of the problem is they're not trained in medical terms, and so their words are hard to. The ones at the hospital.
Here's another one.
Oh, yeah.
School to learn those terms. And the difference between an interpreter. This two words is like where I used to work. An interpreter. Says what they say. Stop. Never interrupt and never talk over. My girls. I just needed you to say, you know. You know, whatever. There was a time where one of them were like, like my interpreter and my customers.
You don't know what the interpreter is saying.
If I, if I appear to be changing at the same time.
Fair rate.
They're putting her on PR and she's resigning and putting her on PR.
Yeah, if you can clean that whole situation up over there, that would be awesome.
Let's the party rock.
I know. That's what I said, too. I saw a little, little verbiage.
This is my county?
No, no, that's gotta go wrong. Ball goes over it and then it comes up to sign off. It's a mineral management.
Where do we sign?
Just see how we.
Ron, we're about ready to say the pledge, so.
Okay.
Yes, thanks, Ron.
All right, I'm gonna try to get this handed off to Dave.
One last one.
Oh, yeah. Oh, for, he asked me where we're gonna end up.
Well, we got a minute if you need it.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Get this show started again. Open the papers here. Everybody had a chance to review the agenda.
Yes, sir.
And is there any conflicts of interest with today's agenda?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe. And monitor, if you would do us a favor, reading the minutes.
Yes, so there are two days.
Okay.
Ten to eleven. So starting with January tenth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rosberg, Chairman presiding, members present. For Schultz, Dozart, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Minutes of the previous minutes. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, on motion, the board recognizes claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved the Recorder's Quarterly Report for October and December twenty twenty-two. The board approved the Sheriff's Quarterly Report for October through December twenty twenty-two. The board approved change of status for Kayla Morgan, First Deputy Recorder's Office. At ten twenty-eight, a motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden to go on, go into re, on, go on a recess. The board reconvened for budget work sessions with the department heads at one PM. On motion, duly seconded, board adjourned at three thirty PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting. Then January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine eight AM with Ty Rosberg, Chairman presiding. All members were present. The board met with department heads for budget work sessions. At twelve twenty, the board took a recess. The board reconvened at one oh five to meet with department heads for budget work session. On motion duly seconded, board adjourned at four oh three PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on forty-four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
It seemed like we did, Mark. Anybody have any additions or corrections?
So there's.
On the second, on the second date, did we meet at eight or nine?
Eight.
I'm gonna make sure.
When you go on PR and status, that mean you gotta keep your current salary?
I don't know.
What it means is you, what it has been. What it's been meaning is that, that you would still have access to the county, take that county computer with you because in case you need it, that's kind of. It's one of those things that Amy brought to my attention at one point in time, that, you know, some of the people that we, we just haven't let them go. They're still there if we need them. So they still have access to certain things. And there's one that hasn't been called for anything for a couple of years, but still has a county computer. So there's some things that need to be tightened up a little bit possibly, and so that, and I also believe that that PRN status fulfills the need of having a certain amount of people on staff. You know, so that, or to keep your certifications and so forth, that you need that's amount of things. And I think that has a little bit to do. But as you know, I'm very new to getting to the bottom of those things. But those are some things that I'll try to find out.
Yeah, no, that is, if they're gonna resign on one letter, then go on PRN and the next face paper, I just, I just.
So she resigned as part-time and then became a PRN.
Yeah, so you want the part-time to on-call as needed.
I think until we know more about it, you know, is this the same person that comes up from like Arizona once a year?
Oh, I don't know what that is. Rosa Fernandez? She's the interpreter.
Yeah.
You'll be able to ask at the meeting.
I would have to, but it's a privilege.
Yeah, I don't. I mean, if they truly.
I will.
And I know we need a.
Why they're doing it.
May I concern about our county computers being not given back? And the fact that they might still have logins and things like that.
Yeah. Do you retain PRN status until it's revoked or until you, do you have to? I guess. Kind of like, like here, do you have to be terminated from PRN status or can you, you have to do a written resignation? How does that work? There's no time?
Probably. There, there's, there's someone that's been on for two years.
So she did the written resignation. We accepted that.
No, this wants to notice that she's gonna, that she's gonna serve as a PRN.
Is that for Rosa?
No, this is for.
And so this is the Rosa. You're talking about the Rosa.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, there was one that already went around, I think. I think it's in the.
Anyways, sorry. Good questions, man. So regardless of this one.
Can we, can we like table this one until we know a little bit?
A resignation. I mean, that's, that should be no big deal.
And if this one here is the, moves her to the new job.
All right.
I just would like to know what that's about.
Well, we should. I think that that's a part of our due diligence before we.
I mean, we can, I mean, I don't see any reason we can't do it right away next week.
The good news is, is that I will be at the board meeting on the twenty-first, and I'll be glad to bring those questions forward and share that information with you.
Put them back in the.
Yeah, put it back in.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
That's just, just so we have it clarified.
So this.
And it's PRN status only for the Crawford County Board to help.
Far as I've ever heard.
Okay.
And we can. Kind of a nursing.
Yeah.
Nursing, or you know, a medical acronym for, that's what I understand it to anyway.
We can have Amy. I think Amy understands it.
Yeah, she probably does.
But we don't have people like in your.
No, I don't. Yeah, I think so. If she can give us any light on it. Because I feel like if they go on PRN, they need to, they need to bring in the county equipment that they currently possess. And not take it again until they're called in to duty.
Come in and grab it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Sounds legitimate to me.
Just get to hold on to it.
In a world where we're sitting arguing over papers that we don't know what the hell.
I feel like some PRN is for some grants to have a specific position on staff.
Oh, my. So that we're pro remata. Circumstance, as circumstance.
We have our HR expert here to answer the question. So PRN status.
Yes.
Is basically like on-call. Um, but there's a little, a couple of issues that we have ran into with the status. One being if they quit, like they have resigned. And then I don't know if they, if Kim, the supervisor, asked them to stay back, you know, to, you know, please stay on. Well, then, if they, like, just. Hang out there for ever and ever and never work, we finally put them on, take them off payroll. Then they can go and file unemployment and say that they were terminated. When they weren't, they quit and was asked to come back or stay on to, you know, for on-call. Because we literally just had that happen. Like she had quit, but then they asked her to stay. But now we got an unemployment claim and we can't show that she quit because we asked her to stay.
Talk a little bit about the.
Interesting. Glad we put a check on that.
Yeah. And then the other thing is we have this lady that has been in this PRN status for over a year, quite possibly two years now.
Because I was made aware of it the first year I was on.
Yeah. And she still has one of the laptops. And she has not worked. She has not been in the building for two years.
Yeah.
Why does she still have a laptop?
Yeah. And we assume she still has a laptop.
Right.
Is there, is there a reason or is it advantageous for them to put them on PRN status or?
That would have to be.
And I will.
Yeah, and, and answer from Kim because to me, I don't, I don't see why if, if you, if they leave. Let them leave and go find a part-time person to fill that position, not try to keep them on payroll forever and ever and ever, and then them not ever coming back or, you know, whatever.
You know, it's Crawford County Home Health, the only people that have people on PRN status.
Yeah, like there's nobody else in the county that does that.
I mean, you hear it out at the hospital, but I don't know. Is it the same thing out there when you hear them talk about PRN?
Right, yeah. It's an all-on-call status, but out there, I mean, I think it's used a little bit more regularly. You know, the, the people come in and work.
And when they need.
These people, they, yeah, they might not work for six months, eight months. And then it's like, why, why even have them come in? Because you don't know what's changed in their life. You don't know if, you know, they can't lift five pounds or, you know, you just don't know, like, I don't know.
Seems like there's a little bit of a lingering effect over there that they just have a little bit of separation anxiety. Does that make sense?
Right, but I mean.
Does she live in Arizona? Is that the one that?
No, no.
That just comes back from Arizona.
No, that's, yeah, that's Karen, mom? Jennifer, mom?
It's mom. Do you know how long this person's working for?
A few years.
Yeah, I'm trying to get ahold of Craig. Of course, Craig.
And I'll ask those questions.
Yeah, and you might, you might bring up the whole.
Yeah, I was called Kevin for my first year, two years.
All right, I will.
Okay, so I start calling Steve.
The answers are that. Before our next meeting, okay?
Should I call him? Yeah.
All right.
Give me a second. Did I get an approval on the minutes?
I think so.
Yeah.
All right, supervisors report. Adam Hayden, since you're kind of.
Okay, well, I have to make the confession that I'm not as organized as I'd like to be. I have a lot of miscellaneous things going on that, now I've lost the whole thing that I want to talk about. Oh, right here. So as you know, last week on Tuesday, I did go down and zoomed in to the Rolling Hills Governance Board. And it's, it's rolling along. I'll, I'll start with the fact that there was actually a motion to give everybody an eight percent raise. It got tabled and got put aside. Then there was the gentleman Nat from Woodby or Woodbury County that said he would go with a four percent. And then there was, you know, discussion. And so we ended up tabling it to see kind of where we all were with raises in our county. And last year, they believed we took an average of what, that where the counties were at and kind of worked from there. But it's all about trying to get one person, you know, raised. And so I talked to the supervisor that's trying to get her employee record a raise because she believes she's underpaid. And I just don't think that it's prudent to give everybody one just because then everybody gets, yeah, so we had a big discussion about that. Um, we did finally get our data analysis performance. And once again, the numbers are not where we want them to be. And as we, as a board of thirteen different individuals from nine different counties, expressed the fact that we just don't think we're getting the bang for our buck. It was brought to our attention that they are just like the fire station. They have to be there. You have to, and it's, you're thankful if you don't have a fire. So you have to have this therapist on staff. You have to have your, your administrator there. You have to have your core services in place. When that person comes. And so I guess when you put the analogy of, you know, we have a fire station with, with firemen ready to go. And just because we didn't have three hundred fires last week doesn't mean that we have to do away with the fire station. And so.
Jean, I got Steve on speaker now. If we wanna get him in here and, and go over this, we're gonna try to do this at nine fifteen as long as he's available. And doesn't have something, a committee meeting or something like that going on, on, on Tuesdays at nine fifteen, so.
Yeah.
Steve, if you'd like to begin with what you're. Or do you got some? Okay, we're, we're ready, we're ready for you.
Good morning, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. I have, I asked, spoke with, with Ty and some other folks there on, on supervisors there. And asked if we could do this every week or every other week because, you know, with the property tax bill being considered, this session, obviously, we have to have your input. We have to have the input of supervisors across the state on the, on the proposals we're looking at. So that is why I thought it would be a great idea. Not just for that reason, but just going forward at least every two weeks to, to just kind of check in with you and see how things are going. See what's also on legislation would not be considering it would impact supervisors. I sent a copy of the, or I sent a link to the property tax bill, I think to all of you. I think I sent it, uh, pretty much to every one of you. So hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that. I can tell you that, and Dave, you texted me. I appreciate that and called me. I just haven't had a chance to get back in touch with you. I hope to do that in the next day or two if it works for your schedule in mind. I just want to let you all know that this is really in the beginning stages. I think this legislation is going to have a lot of changes, is my opinion. Before it, it gets anywhere close to the final product. I think the Senate may have a different version. So I just want to make you guys aware that this is nowhere close to a done deal or anything of that kind. There's a lot of discussions that have to be done before this bill gets anywhere close to final passage. So with that, I'll just open it up to any, you know, questions or concerns you have at this point. That's about all I have to share with you. You know, last week was all about the inauguration and the certification of the votes and, and all of the addresses required by, by law. The governor's condition of the state, the Ashton General's speech on the condition of the guard, and then the justice on the judiciary. So committee meetings have somewhat begun, but otherwise, that's really all I have to report right now. And I'd love to hear any feedback you have.
We'll, we'll just start this kind of in order. Does anybody like to go first here and ask any questions of Steve? Of the representative? Dave, go ahead, please.
Hey, Steve, Dave Mulbauer here. Appreciate you sending me over House File One for review. Read through it. I had a few thoughts and concerns on it. Looking at the capped assessed values, I guess there's some questions for you. A lot of people's homes are their asset, and if we cap the assessed values, that could affect our markets. I kind of thought, you know, I'm thinking about property tax cuts. And I was wondering if there could be a route of maybe more like our commercial backfill or say some of the things we provide for the state. That isn't fully backfilled, like driver's license, DOT, things like that. If there could be, where you could cut property taxes on that end, but then backfill the counties rather than going towards the assessed values. The other thing and kind of with the schools, and I'm, I'm just kind of throwing out all my thoughts at you here, so bear with me, Steve. The ten percent funds that need to be raised to say potentially do a GO bond could hamstring or tie the hands of, let's say, our schools or counties in a way that. They need to do a GO bond because they need to add classrooms or upgrade their, be in compliance, and they don't, wouldn't necessarily have that initial investment upfront.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, I didn't want to interrupt you. Is that it? You want me to respond now?
Yeah, yeah.
Please, please go ahead and respond.
Give me just a second. I'm walking by a machine here, so.
It's fine.
I apologize.
I know. We know you're busy down there.
So like I said, all of this is very much in the infancy stages. If you can email me, Dave, all of your suggestions, all of your concerns, and that goes to all of you. If you can send it in an email to me, I will definitely bring up all of your ideas and all of your concerns for consideration. One of the things that we heard most on the campaign trail, and I'm sure you guys hear it all the time, too, is related to people on fixed income. People that are retired and I heard on so many doorsteps, you know, I'm gonna lose my home because I can't afford my property taxes. This is a real concern, obviously, for those on social security and those that are retired. And so what I have suggested as part of the proposal, and you don't have to answer me today necessarily, you can think about it and tell me what you think. But one of the things I've proposed is that we freeze property taxes. At the moment someone retires so that their property, just their home, not, not any other assets, just their home.
Primary residence.
Would be frozen home, the home until they retire or, or once they retire. And then obviously it would revert back to whatever the market would be once they sold, transferred, whatever of the property. That is something that I've recommended. I've, I've got it running the numbers of just exactly how much that might cost, you know, counties and then that sort of thing. But that's, that's one of the ideas I've had. As to your ideas, again, Dave, please put those in an email to me and I will definitely bring those up. I'm not on the committee that is considering this, but I'll definitely bring it up to Bobby Coffin, who's Chair of Ways and Means, and we'll see where we can go with it.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Steve. Does Jean know? Craig, do you have?
Steve, hey, Kyle Schultz here. As a supervisor and a school board member, the local option sales tax visiting that you guys are looking on is very concerning to both those hats I put on. Our county and our school board really rely heavily on that local option sales tax. And any decrease in that would be detrimental to the county and a, and a lot of the schools.
So are you referring to that provision where we're talking about like transferring it to the state, that part of the?
Yes, yep, yep.
I'm not a fan of that part. I'll tell you that right now. I have already voiced my concerns about that issue. We'll see where it goes going forward, but before you even mentioned that to me, Kyle, I've, I've had the same reaction to that. So we'll, we'll see where it goes, and I think there's gonna be a lot of objections to that, so we'll, we'll see where it goes as we, as we move along.
I appreciate that. I just, the last school board meeting, it was actually a joint meeting with the MBO and the COU boards. And the, the thought there was you're, you're gonna legislate us into consolidating into bigger school districts because we can't afford to keep doors open, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that is a legitimate concern, and like I said, I'm, I'm not a fan of that part, so we'll see what happens.
Thanks, Steve.
I, Steve, this is, this is Ty, down to me now. Say, they pretty well hit property tax and, and what you said, you know, I, I actually like what you said about maybe considering a freeze for the retiree, especially those fixed income people, I, I, on a primary residence. I, I, I mean, I, I'm, that, that sounds like a pretty fair, pretty fair way to keep our, our seniors in their home and be able to eat the things too. So, but I, I also got, I seen where the Senate file, and I know this is on another side of the building from me, but county compensation boards are working on, and I, I've got a little. I, I just, I don't think that it's something that we necessarily should do away with under the present structure. You know, I mean, there's a couple of different ways that they're doing payroll out on some of the different counties now, and, and we're looking into some different things. But as far as compensation boards, the only thing that I really think would be necessary, you know, if we keep those, and, and I'm fine with keeping them, but I think there needs to be a little bit more guidance, and there needs to be, I mean, even, even the representative, the people they're representing when they have these boards don't feel that they're always getting adequate representation, and I, I suspect that's due to guidance. And then their justification for us would be, you know, critical. And I think in Senate File Thirty Two is what it says, that, that their guidance for why they believe, just their justification, I should, I guess I should say, is coming to the board, so we understand what they're after and what they're up to. I mean, as it sits now, we get a, we get a percentage and, and have no idea what they're thinking. No, you know, unless, unless we go to that board, and we try not to be influenced it, obviously. So, I mean, I think that those are some things that should be considered if that hits your side of the building.
Thank you. Let me tell you, in full disclosure, I'm not familiar with the bill that you just mentioned. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of bills moving right now.
Yes, sir.
We're busy as a dickens, but I can tell you that there is, at least for the last two years, there's been discussion on the county compensation force. And there's some folks that want to get away, do away with them, think they cause more problems than that, than, than they solve. There's other people that think they're great, and we should keep them, maybe make some modifications. When I talk to county supervisors, you know, across the state and in my own district, I get the same reaction. There's no consensus. There's some county supervisors that say, yes, we think we should do away with county compensation forces, others that say no. And so I don't know where that discussion is going to lead right now. You know, the bill you just mentioned, because I'm not familiar with it at this time.
Yeah, they, they both, the Senate File Eighteen and Senate File Thirty Two is what their numbers are, if you wanted to pick them quick. That's, that was our thing, and I, I really wouldn't want to take a position one way or the other without actually talking to the other department heads, sitting down with them and seeing, seeing how, how they feel it values for them or against them, you know. So, I mean, I, at this time, I just don't have a, I mean, I've got some personal opinions, but them aren't necessarily always what we're looking for. Anyway.
I've got a few things.
Okay, Jean's, this is the Jean now.
I see, this is Jean Hayden. I just want to make sure that you continue looking at eminent domain and the pipeline and things like that. I understand there's some things going with that, and I just hope that you keep Crawford County in mind and how we feel about our property here. And that eminent domain does not belong for public gain. It's, it's, it's kind of really broad, private gain, excuse me. So that's just one thing I, I hope you keep us informed on. Also, public health, mental health, you know, I had my meeting again, how that's going with the funding from the state. You know, this time around, it's my understanding we're gonna get, we were scheduled to get four million. We're only gonna be getting a million to try to get our fund balances paid down, but we're so restricted on what we have to pay. And so I, I'm hoping that they can kind of level out a little bit on how that's going and how they're funding our mental health. Always been a concern that while we're figuring this out, somebody's gonna fall between the cracks, and so I hope you keep that at the top of the things that you keep us informed in also. So that's all I have for this morning, but thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you, and let me comment on all those two things. I'll take the second one first. On that, I haven't, I wasn't aware of that, so I'll definitely speak with, with Ann Meyer, Chelmsel, Cheltenham Service, as well as Joel Fry, who chairs the budget side of it. On the issue of eminent domain, it's probably no surprise to any of you that, that I, I am working. I'm sort of in the lead with a number of other legislators that's working on the eminent domain issue. I can tell you, we got way more complaints last week. I met with individuals from the ethanol industry. They have found, this is just a recent development, apparently, folks in the ethanol industry have found that there's this huge tax incentive for them connected to the CO2 pipeline, and they believe that if, if they do not get that, then they, our ethanol plants in Iowa will be in a tremendous disadvantage to ethanol plants in other states. While I appreciate that concern, I will make it clear to all of you, in case you don't know where I stand on it, that I don't have a problem with the CO2 pipeline. What I have a problem with is the use of eminent domain for what is a private economic development project. I do not believe that is an appropriate use of eminent domain. And I don't think that property owners should be forced to take that pipeline under their property when they, you know, when they have safety concerns, they feel it will affect their crop land, their safety. And so it's just fundamental American right is private property, and so that is where my concern rests. And again, in, in case folks don't know, sometime in the eighties, it was put into Iowa code that eminent domain could be used for CO2 pipelines. I'm told historically that this was based on some of the early ethanol plants that were having economic troubles early on, and, and that was done related to sort of short little pipelines, maybe sort of something like you think about at Continental Carbonics, Anderson Ethanol Plant. It wasn't intended for what we're dealing with today, but nonetheless is in code. So that complicates the efforts. I, I take the position that Farm Bureau does. I don't think eminent domain should be able to be used for the pipeline, but since that is in code, and we can retroactively remove it when there's already investors and all this stuff going on, I think that my position is that we should allow, have at least ninety percent voluntary buy-in, which is the Farm Bureau's position, and there are some new safety regulations coming out. I think there should be a moratorium on any licensing or, or any, any movement forward on this project until these new safety guidelines are out. And finally, for the future going forward, I would love to see that eminent domain language stripped from code. That would not obviously impact what is going on right now, because I don't think legally we would be in a position to make that retroactive. But that is the position I'm in. Again, obviously, I'm concerned about the ethanol industry. And I have, you know, I, like I said, I'm agnostic on the CO2 pipeline. If it's gonna help ethanol and other people, okay. But they shouldn't get to take other people's property to do it. So that, that is my position, and I'm working with other legislators to try to move some legislation forward this session in that regard.
Understanding. And Dave's got another one for you, Steve.
Hey, Steve, Dave here. On the pipeline, you know, of course, we've been discussing it thoroughly and trying to just position our county to protect it, our own county backyard interest. Knowing that with all what you just said and, and being discussed at the state level, is there anything that you could suggest that as a county that we could move forward with so that we're not behind the eight ball in, in any of this until things get sorted out at the legislative level?
Well, I certainly can't give you legal advice, but what I, what I would say is, I think that from my personal perspective, I think that what Shelby County supervisors did in inactive ordinance is to try and protect their citizens and protect their businesses and protect their schools was appropriate, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Steve. Well, thank you very much, and I think my, my only question with the pipeline or that weren't already asked is, uh, and, and I don't. Economic development, I mean, they literally turned the pipeline towards Dennison, and I assume it was to save them money on a pipeline that they'd ever hook up to Anderson's. And I, I, to me, that's stifling our economic development. I mean, I'm, I know this isn't a natural gas pipeline, this isn't an explosive one, but I still think that it, you know, I mean, let's face it. Would you build a new house next to this pipeline? And the two towns that I'm worried about in Crawford County in particular are Sleswig and Dennison. I mean, they really came in close to Dennison, and they were already really close to Sleswig. So these are things that I'm kind of worried about, and I, I think that, you know, along with the other things that are really a, an uphill battle, I think these are things that we're probably gonna want to fight for, so anyway.
Thousands and thousands of miles of pipelines across this country, a tiny, minuscule percentage of that is CO2 pipelines. Actually, in Mississippi, where flooding resulted in the CO2 pipeline failing.
Yes, sir.
You know, there, there are serious safety concerns related to this pipeline that are not the same for oil pipelines or, or those sorts of things. Now, I understand they've changed a lot of things that they do now, as what happened in Mississippi. But nonetheless, I could not agree with you more, Ty, and that is why, but I want everybody to understand the complexity of the issue. We've got the ethanol plants that will be a, a great positive for them. Got the fact that he's already in, in code, and he's got billions of dollars of investment. And we do have a system through the Iowa Utilities Board to deal with this, but we're gonna do our best to put some additional protections in for, for private property owners this session. We'll see what happens.
All right, Crawford County is not for sale, and you can't just take it if you want it, so that's.
Like I said, this is an economic development project. It, there should never be. And again, I think everybody knows the Supreme Court decision, US Supreme Court decision, it was late some years ago, the Bunkhouse case, where they sort of expanded the use of eminent domain beyond what anybody had previously believed it was for. And so that also complicates this issue, but we're gonna, we're gonna do our best, see what we can do.
Thanks, sir. Does anybody have anything else? Well, Mr. Holt, thank you so much for reaching out to us today, and I look forward to it in, in two weeks, if not sooner. If you got something you want to bring to us, please just contact me, and I'll make sure that you're into the front part of our supervisors' reports.
Sounds good, sir. Thank you all. Take care and have a great day.
All right, keep fighting for us. We appreciate it. Thanks, Steve.
Keep mine short, you know, I have all these numbers and whatnot. So basically, you know, last month, we wanted to have that data analysis performance plan that kind of broke down our price per person, what we pay for the service. And so that, those numbers came, and, you know, in Subacute, I won't give you all of them. We had six people, and it cost a hundred and sixty, two thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars, which is twenty-seven thousand eighty-one dollars per person in the Subacute, and it goes on, and, and none of the numbers are good. And that's where this, this verbiage of, you know, we have to have them out there for in case we need them. My question was, how many of those individuals were actually from Crawford County? You know, how, how many, there's a report out there that I should be able to get. I haven't gotten those numbers yet. I was actually kind of looking through here to see, so I've requested those numbers. So a couple of months ago at the meeting, we wondered if we could just do a pay for service. You know, if we send someone from Crawford County, can we pay the actual cost for what that is? But we were told that that would crash the whole system, you know, if they didn't have this. So we are working on it. We're working on the denial method of, you know, when someone comes for the service and they're turned away, I really want to get to how, how many people are coming that their needs don't meet the services they provide and where they go. Because what our goal is, is to keep these people from going to the emergency room because they feel like they need help. But they're either, something that, and the boxes that they check doesn't let them into this particular service, or they go to the emergency room, which is neither one of those places are where they should go. So if I have a big building with a lot of beds, and I have somebody that, or they have somebody that feels like they are in crisis mode, we need to let them in. I, I just, you know, but I don't work there. I don't walk a mile in their shoes. I don't understand these big numbers of what it costs per person when we finally do find somebody. And I'm struggling to get the answers a little bit, but I'm, I, I will get this report on how many of these particular individuals that were led into this center actually were from Crawford County. And where are people that are in crisis mode go, and, and, you know, how this money that? So the other takeaway from the meeting, and I, I did not, I can't print from this computer. If anybody has figured it out, come over here and show me. But what the other takeaway from the, the meeting was, is that we are, like I told Steve, we were scheduled, you know, to get around four million. We'll only be getting a million, because they want us to pay down our balances. And so that makes us nervous, and the bottom line is we're gonna be approximately ninety. The number's gotten a little bit smaller now that Dawn has her final numbers closer to about ninety-seven thousand. It's where we're gonna be short. Remember, it used to be about six hundred thousand and nine hundred, and now that the numbers are in.
Still ninety-seven, a hundred thousand.
About, which is still, you know, but we are gonna be able to finance stepping stones. They're gonna be doing some, a little bit of tweaking with that, I guess, how that goes. But that's kind of the, the overview of all of it. So, our rest has to talk, so I'll be short.
It seems to me that maybe the whole regions need to be restructured. And here's the problem, Jean. The idea was that it was supposed to pool our resources to cover the whole region, but watching it evolve of how now the levees aren't there and the state's hanging over it. We're in a desert out here for mental health services, but yet all the services are in the urban areas like Woodbury.
Right.
So what good does it do us to have a region if we're being left with no services here? Or no say here. So maybe the region, the whole idea, the regions and the state hanging over it does need to be reconstructed to something that fits us in our rural areas.
Originally, when we started talking about this, Dave, there were supervisors that wondered why we even would need to still go to these, these board meetings because we really are having no, no real say, and they said, oh, no, we want, you know, boots on the ground right there where it's happening. But when, when we're told that we have no control over these kind of numbers, you know, fifty-two people were in the crisis center, Subacute, my questions were, how long does each one of them stay? They can only stay there for forty-eight hours, you know, and that's the kind of, kind of money that we're spending per person that actually makes it through the door. And my question is, are these any of the people that are coming from Pocahontas, from Carroll County, from Carroll County? Or, you know, and there is a report out there that can tell me that. Now, I would think in a week I should have that.
And I'm not trying to belittle, I mean, I know there is a mental health crisis, and I see it, I'm just trying to stick up for us here in rural Iowa. There is, we have no say what we can do, and there is no services that supply the need that we need to get to our people.
What's the number you call in Crawford County if you feel you're in a crisis?
I have no idea.
Ninety-eight.
Then why does Polk County get an extra two million dollars?
Steve?
You don't know either. I guarantee you.
That beating your head against the wall feeling that I leave every time I leave one of those meetings that I, I just, and, and we're all in the same boat. It's not like Crawford, it, you know, it, and we knew the first time that we heard that this was gonna go back to the state, that there's gonna be things that fall between the cracks before we actually get the, they feel like they have it all under control. But to me, these are, these just aren't acceptable numbers, and I don't know.
But yet we worry about stepping stones, which we know is a huge success in our own backyard, could be on chopping block because it's not a core services.
My meeting in November, we had to have a quick Zoom meeting, because Clay was, his, his question was, is it time we close stepping stones? That's how we started the meeting, and the answer was a resounding no. That's one program that we have proven, and since that came about, some people that actually work at Wesco or that are previous employees of Wesco have called me to tell me that, and one of them is actually a reform drug person that had actually done a little bit of time in the prisons. And they're literally saying that is the best thing, that they need that, that stepping stone to get them ready to get back. And they're literally saying that is the best thing, that they need that that stepping stone to get them ready to get back into society. And that that's really one that works. And there's a waiting list. Any program that has a waiting list is a good program, you know, that we're waiting. And that would be the last place you would start cutting your funds. And so we keep plugging away at it. We, I just feel like we have all of the tools. The money is kind of there, but I'm just not happy with the way that it's being distributed, and we really don't have any say about it. It's the bottom takeaway. And we we don't really think the answers are there yet.
What are your other small counties? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what are your other smaller counties? Are are do they have the same attitude that you do? So if you guys banded together and just started piling on them, is that gonna, would that help?
When Rich Rubels was there from Carol, he was the first one to mention, do we even need to still come to these meetings? Do we need to have them every month? Should we have them quarterly? Yeah, how often do we do we need to get together at budget time? Because getting numbers that look like this. And you're not happy with them, and you have no real control, and you're told that that's just the way it is. I think that's the answer. That's just the way it is. Get used to it.
Well, and you know, the thing is, is they're not having great success with some of the programs they do have. That's obvious. And, you know, when we don't, when we won't even consider new programs that are demonstrated successful, being successful. I, to me, you know, you say it probably every other meeting, if not every third. If we aren't thinking outside of the box, we're not doing a good service to our folks. And and I think that those are some of the things in public health, excuse me, mental health, that's got to happen.
Unless you've been around someone who has a mental issue. And I was involved with one person a few years back, when they need help, they, it can't be tomorrow. It can't be next week. They don't want to drive to Sioux City, quite frankly. You know, at one point in time, the answer was. Yeah, build a huge center in Iowa City, and we'll just send everybody there. And that's just not the answer, especially when it's children and and, you know, teenagers. The parents want them close by. They don't want them, and the trip there is probably going to be the most agonizing part of this. Because they're scared then, on top of the issue they're they're suffering. So I wish I had the answers. I really.
Two there, two thoughts here on that. It almost needs to come full circle, where they give the mental health funds back to the counties per capita. To let us locally decide what's best. But with that, do you know, Gene, what would happen? You said all these rural counties that are in the same boat as us that are feeling like our needs are not being met, decided to leave Rolling Hills.
Well.
Why can't we say, we don't want to be a part of a region that doesn't fill our needs in? Start our own, or go to the, let's say we have a four county region that's right here that we want our funds here, and we'll decide it ourselves.
I have the answer. You have to provide what they call the core services in order for the state to recognize you as a funding source. So if you're not, if you don't have an acute center, a subacute center, a crisis center. There's like all these different categories of services that you have to, you're an evidence-based performance.
And why can't we run that through public health?
Because they wouldn't have that therapist available for that person that's having a subacute attack. Or a crisis mode. Well, you're going to have to have that person on staff twenty-four seven, because you never know when that's going to happen. It's not like an eight to five job. Where all people only have mental ill illness breakdowns during eight to five, and they never have no weekends or holidays. You know, so so those are the 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 things you have to realize that. And and people that are therapists, they've got a degree. They they need to be paid some nice money to to sit around and wait for that. So those are the the core, you know, that word core, you have to have these certain services, and I can give you a copy of what are considered the core services. And they figure the best way to do that is to pool your resources, and everybody put in a little something for that therapist that's waiting. Now, has the bed available and the food available and, you know, because it's a thing that happens immediately. And I I I resent the fact that we all are told we need to go to Sioux City.
Just to piggyback off of Dave's thought would be, if you could do it in a four county area, you could hire these independent therapists. Going back two conversations ago, put them on PR and status.
There you go.
Only pay them when we need them.
But who can support your family, not knowing exactly how often you're going to be needed? There has to be some guarantee of some funds to put your career on hold while you try this new experience.
Put it on a volunteer buyer service. They get called any time of the day for any number of reasons. Let's make them volunteer buyer buyers.
Well, we're thinking outside the box really good today.
I think that, yeah.
Well, either way, we know that there there's a lack of services here. We feel like it's not a whole region and something maybe you'd have to have.
Volunteer Emergency Response Task.
You talk to our ER people, and and they're just, you know, what do we do with these people that we're not training? You know, we don't have medications to give, we don't have, you know, so.
Did you guys have something we could bring it up afterward? Yeah, that was, it's it's a very, very critical. Thank you. Ben, well, we'll go ahead and get started with you and what you've got for us.
A lot of calls about it. You guys are out addressing that as best we can. All the blades are out trying to, all any spots, like you mentioned, we're just knocking down a lot of areas that can be fixed with just. Blading and bringing it, the villain in the ruts and and if it's looking good, they're leaving it that, and they're just pulling rock out to the. The really destroyed areas, which we got some that are just terrible out there, which I'm sure a lot of you have probably got calls on, so. There, yeah, yes, they're doing what they can do. They're doing what they can do.
How many times in January do we have a rainstorm on a forty-some degree day, you know, creating these? I mean, I I get that these roads are quagmires. I drove on, to be honest with you. I remember when I first come home from the army, it'd be all corn out of the country this time, you know, in the spring or any other time. I remember it being even worse than what we're dealing with there. So, I mean, I I get that there's a lot out there, but. I think that I think it's just a matter, a simple matter of economics. Do what you do the best you can and find the worst holes and fix them.
Yep, and that's what they're doing. If it warms up to the point here today that they just can't be out there on them themselves, which like yesterday, there's. We were to destroy the roads ourselves trying to trying to fix them. But they're gonna gear up this afternoon, and when things get warmed up and they they can't do much more out there. And get geared up for snow tomorrow.
One one extreme to the next. I see you having targeting some of the worst spots with white rock and everything. That helps fill those holes.
Some of these passable areas, we're putting, we're putting some limestone in to get them passable, the worst areas. But a lot of these areas that were just being shut, there's no point in putting gravel on it, and if it's going to snow, we're going to blade it right off tomorrow.
That's what I mean. You had, I saw Manella, you had some, you put the white rock in just to bridge across the.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, some areas are true, they are that bad, the roads destroyed and trying to address them. But yeah, if it's, if it doesn't need rock, we're trying to just open a hole out and let it freeze down. Which hopefully it does before snow comes tomorrow. If it stays frozen and that we're not snowing on top of wet.
On this very subject, I seen Marida County had put a posted something, and it even showed up on Facebook. The, they actually asked the people to be a little bit more conscious of what they're doing. I mean, don't. If you're hauling corn, get it loaded in the afternoon or the evening, and then get it out of the farm, and the first thing in the morning when we're still a little stiff out there on the roads. If you can help us out, help, how did Jerry McGwire say, help me help you, you know? I think that would probably be something to ask him, because this isn't, I mean, January typically, this is the last thing we worry about in January is typically, you know, a sloppy road. Now, we do worry about it in March. Obviously, maybe we move it all the way through, but I think maybe if we actually maybe put out a public, you know, I think that.
The stewards of the roads would be helped. You know, that if the roads are like this, just reconsider whether or not you really need all that corn.
Their feed's got to get to animals. We get.
It does, yes.
I mean, to me, that's always a priority one. But even even if the farmers that have to ship hogs, I I know that that's one of the things that that that. Zach called Smithfield about, hey, some of our roads over here are a mess. You know, if we could change our load times or something like that, you know, do the best you can. Even working with that, you know, because they don't, somebody sitting in Algonha, Iowa, has no idea what we're dealing with in Crawford County, you know, for the most part. Anyway, maybe that's something to do.
I think you're right on target. I mean, I know in March of nineteen, there was counties out and put a embargo on the roads. And that's, you know, that's the last thing we want to do. I'd rather do exactly what you just said, Ty, and communicate with us and then work with you.
Last time we embargoed the roads, all I did was kept the county trucks off the roads, because any farmer came in and get get a slip that says they were exempt from it. We couldn't haul rock on it because we were overloaded.
The best thing to do is have open, open dialogue.
Yeah, I think if you work with, most of our farmers are good stewards of their land, which the roads are their land. Just ask them to work with us. We're really trying our best, and we got a budget we gotta do.
Really makes you question all these packer-owned facilities that get taxed at agricultural facility taxes. And then we got to spend tax dollars to fix them up, because they don't care what the roads are. They're getting their feed in, and they're getting their hogs out, or. Really makes you question that, don't it?
No arguing out of me there. No argument out of me there. I mean, it's it's expensive to maintain these roads. We've got a lot of miles.
What are you gonna do for us? And some will take you to it, some will, some will give that some thought, you know, you know, communicate in that respect. It's gonna happen to be the nature of it. But yeah, I I I agree, yeah. Sort of know us out there, and they try to reconsider.
I'm a trucker. I use, and my my fleet uses these gravels all over the state a lot. So I get it, and I used to always sit there and think, why don't they put more white rock out? Well, you you know, it's easy to sit there and think of that while you're out there fighting that road that day, but then you got to, we got a budget. And white rock is, for us, is extremely expensive, you know, and we got to use it strategically. How's that? For lack of a better word.
We're gravel poor town. We we got pretty good stock files up right now. Need to use it all up, but.
This is, this isn't typical. I mean, so if we use it all in January, where are we going to be in March?
Right.
But I do think one of the best things we did years ago was putting the extra hundred and fifty thousand on a rural basic, I think it is. Towards white rock. It just gives you that extra tool in the tool case.
And I think it's made a difference on the roads over the year.
You can target.
Especially like on the north side of AL. Anyway, sorry, Ben, we're we're hijacking your.
Jim is down there busting into the plot. It took him a little bit, but they've been scratching at that pile, trying to get, you know, get into it. You know, being froze, but I think they've got pretty loosened up and not having too much trouble. Brandon up there north to get loads from Fort Dodge and just bringing it straight down, but we need it. We now.
Yeah, that's a five-hour project for him to go grab one load.
Right. But that's what's going on. I'm sure we'll see a lot more calls yet before it's through, but.
And just tell everybody, tell everybody the facts, keep them informed of what we're doing. I mean, Sean and Chris are out there busting butt to find the bad spots.
Yeah, Chris was out there yesterday. Had some. You see a heavy wrecker going down a gravel road, you know, it's not a good sign. He was, what I was seeing, he was making it worse, just trying to get to the spot he needed to get to.
It's an unusual weather pattern, and it's kicking our tush right now.
Yep, freezing temperatures now on the ten-day forecast, you know, it's gonna freeze down here, but.
And hopefully we get the ruts smoothed out before it freezes off.
Talking to the guys, they're, except that they're not gonna be able to get it all back. It is not. There's too much of it out there. Get the worst of it, get what they can, and then. Possibly get some more tomorrow morning before some of this weather event happens, but. It's, they're gonna be out there and get what they can. Hopefully get the worst of it.
Appreciate it. Keep us, keep us posted on on the events of how rings going over the next week.
I just get a little slurp around, you know, on some of them that I've had calls on and.
Dave brought it back up. Just if you get a chance, drive down there and look to see what they're on River View, the concrete up in there, just just take a peek at it, see it.
Yeah, I I just talked Chris about that. Sean, I'm sorry. Kathy took that call. I was gonna take a look at that one.
Appreciate it.
You betcha.
Thanks, number.
All right. I have a question for this that Dave gave me, the Housing Trust Fund. How, so if I'm understanding this correctly, that we as the county. Match a grant, so there would be funds available to help with new housing units, a grant to match. With county, cities, financial institutions, telephone and co-ops. Is there any advertisement about that that people know they can tap into it? It's my understanding that that money's setting in a fund that we, you know, match. And so let's say a low to moderate income person wanted to buy a house, and they were short twenty-five hundred dollars for their closing costs and. Down payment. Can they get a grant application and get that money?
Typically, it's run through your city councils.
So, okay, so this is the same as what the city has.
And then typically, your city halls, people come into a city hall and say, hey, I need assistance. Where do I go? And then they turn back to the con.
So, but it couldn't if you were buying a house outside the city limits of Dennison.
Right, typically, it's within the city limits, you're seeing that, that one being used, because. There's a house identified that repairs and get put back on the market. Glidden had a duplex. Being put up, so did Coop Rapids. Typically, you're seeing it within, in your town where you're seeing these.
Years ago, Dennison had a plan, and they could get up to twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, and it was forgiven over a five-year period. Forgiving it one sixtieth per, and that was only in the city limits. So it's been asked of me if we ever do that in the county or in the smaller communities. They try to work for Manila, that would be fabulous if the county could have that same revolving fund. That we could help, and that would help those houses in the smaller communities that you and I both know are out there. These people are working every day. But they just don't have the money that it's going to take to put new front steps on, you know, because when I was out campaigning. Well, even Charter Oak had a few that you just really, you know, and and if the money's not there, but if there was a program. That that was in the county outside the city limits of Dennison, that would be amazing to help. So is that something that we could bring up to region?
Sure, sure, I can talk to Chris about it. And I would assume, just thinking off the top of my head, that. You know, people that would maybe come into our assessor's office and say, here's my tax value, but I need to improve things, that that could be a possible avenue to. Allow people, or maybe they would come into the auditor's office and ask about what, I don't, do you get that very often, Terry?
Banking institutions are your best place, because you have people that come in and they they have a dire need on their home. It's just falling apart. And they're not in a situation where a financial institution can loan the money. So I would direct them, you know, to. USD hundred percent. They had some things, but they have a real short margin of age and income that you can help with. But I would just like to see that be expanded to our smaller cities and to our.
Our cities already have it.
No, I don't think they do. I don't think.
I sort of sort of right here, you've got housing developments and things being done right as we speak.
In in.
You're talking Glidden and Cooper. Well, Ricketts has to reach out.
Okay, see, that's what I, that's kind of where I was going with that. They need to have a buy-in on it, but I think that we need to maybe start talking about it.
You know, Chris wants to reconvene the.
And we've had those, we've been in those, we've talked about this many times before, you know, you lead a horse to water, but they have to take advantage of it. You have to be a part of the League of Cities, and you have to be involved, and know that that's available. Take advantage of it. You have to be a part of the League of Cities and you have to be involved and know that that's available for you.
And I think the only reason I brought it up is I would like to get some talk again about it because those smaller communities are the ones that are really starting to deteriorate. And we're losing them because.
You have to have the active people in those communities that wanna take advantage of those funds that are there for us.
I think.
It's great that Glidden's got.
Hey, where's the funds come from?
Manila had some buildings.
Do they come out? Do we budget for those funds? Would we budget for those funds?
It's the ten grand housing fund that one.
Yeah.
We already.
We already do.
Okay.
Ten grand don't go far. Is there a.
So it's.
A process that you have to apply for? Because I mean, there's some of these people that maybe we speak of.
And aren't really worried about a front step.
So my.
And then the second thing that I see, a lot of these are probably rental houses that the.
Then landlords can't apply, that's.
Yeah, and they choose not to fix them up.
And I would choose not to give them the funds because they're making money on it. And so, but then there there needs to be. I was just impressed if this was something new that was being offered.
That's been offered for a long time.
That's a head scratcher there.
And it's one of those, we put ten grand in, but they're awarded three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, so.
And I wanted to see that come back.
Put in the matching funds to get the grant. To help the bigger picture.
Right, but but it's not, it's not a bad thing to pursue if you can pull that off. Ten grand and you get damn near four hundred.
Well, but I was thinking if we, if this was something that was a little bit different than what I was used to, I'd like to get the advertising out there so people were aware. That the county has put matching funds in to make funds available, leading that horse so the water.
But we did have, we have had avenues in the past that did exactly that. And like I said, you still have to have willing participants. I wanna step up to the table and take advantage of it.
I I I, I hear ya. Just had a question.
Who approves the applications if people apply?
Yeah.
Do they put priority on on people that are trying to uh improve their assessed value or on properties that maybe are. Are not being taxed now, but due to improvements could be taxed.
By case basis, but. And usually it's, from what they said in our meeting last week was it stems from. You know, somebody within the community or a city council themselves that wants to put something back on the market or fix up their old home or has somebody come in and. I need extra funds to improve my home. Um, so it's, I I don't think there is. Is it one shoe size fits all?
Is it income based?
I don't know. I could ask that.
Um, there's a mission statement used to be to help low to moderate income families get safety sanitary housing. Was there, was there motto back in the day?
We went to that derelict building pro- program that time, just different ways of trying to.
Because I think every community in the county has derelict buildings, they won't, they need cleaned up, but. They don't buy into it or or seek out or at least make an effort to go achieve them funds.
The only reason I brought it up is I was thinking maybe this was something a little bit new that we'd put in.
They're falling in, I mean.
I think it's available to all of our communities. If you got a city council, I'm pretty sure it's available to you.
And that's part of the Lega Cities and it takes us back.
David, you have any meetings last?
Yeah, I had a meeting last week. Um, three and twelve was my biggest meeting. I was up there for about four or five hours just. Going through things with Rick and him, get him, he was catching me up to speed on a lot of things. Um, I'll give you the exciting things we talked about was the fifteen million that they had got from the USD grant that. Is your mean poultry intermediary loan program. Um, minimum application, minimum amount, dollar amount is like five hundred thousand to max is ten mil. Applications are not being received yet. They did hire a new uh person. He was. In banking, Scott Steffen, but he's going to oversee that whole program.
Oh, from Carol?
Yeah. Um, so they're excited about that because it's just gonna be, you're talking a large, large project with fifteen million. And they've had a lot of interest already even before the application process is formalized. Um, they're even thinking that down the road, if you if you get this out the door and really can show that this is improving Western Iowa, that. There could be even more USD or state funds available to continue on. The first round is going to be primarily uh. Focused on your capacity and carcass production. So where your facilities, production and retail are not. Allowed, I mean, for this.
Livestock production, you mean?
Right.
Or retail, like what Bordenarol does.
Right. However, I had asked, so example, like in Arcadia, you know, they do a lot. They butcher a lot, but yet they have their own retail upfront. So they'll have to be split up where they focus more on. You know, the side of butchering, not retail. Um, then the second round would go towards more your transportation. And your inner workings of connections of. Where these people can get sourced beef or hogs or whatever they're into. But transportation is brought that that could be, you know, working on the trucking side of it. Um, so there's a lot, lot that's gonna happen there that's, that's coming down the pipe that's, I think, really gonna be beneficial to Crawford County. Uh, the other thing that was brought up, we had a long discussion about was Iowa workforce development. And it's kind of been quite an ordeal, even way back when the. Counties realigned and we have our eighteen county region we have now. Yeah, I don't know if you guys remember, we had to have a fiscal agent, a board staff. Uh, one stop operator and a service provider. And I remember Scoog and I were even trying to help develop that, how you remember? We did everything that we thought we had to do through workforce development. Now they're telling us it's not right. So we have some options to change. One option out there, um, the chairman is Craig Anderson from Plymouth. It could potentially, like, let's say, uh, fiscal agent right now is our cog. It could be ran through his auditor's office. However, and the funds would go there. Looking at the numbers, we get a million dollars for eighteen counties. Doesn't scratch the surface. Admin alone is like ten percent, does not cover the cost of being the fiscal agent. So big picture, it's not sustainable.
You know, I'd be brought up, just bring up to them. I don't know what their charge is, but it's a, it's something to look at. And I know Tony does it because he's. Created this crew that can service a lot of, as a fiscal agent, Central Iowa Detention actually has, or they do fiscal service.
They do some ECI's. Early childhood Iowa, this Craig gets.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a thought.
Yeah.
The direction of a lot of our counties in this eighteen county region are saying, let's hand it back to the state. We have no local say. If you keep changing the rules on us, we have no money to run it. You can't even run the admin to administer anything. The state is dictated by the uh labor.
Yeah.
To provide this in our area. So that's, that could potentially be what happens i- is that we hand it back to the state with eighteen, but all eighteen counties would have to agree. And then either the state would have to reassess how the structure is for us working with with funding available. Or they would have to provide it themselves.
Oh, boy.
So it's.
I was gonna say, oh, boy.
It's, there's a lot of balls up in the air with workforce. Well, and then I said Crawford County, we are one of the counties, and I brought this up that. Has some of the most to lose because we have.
The development.
We do workforce development right here in our backyard.
Boy, and you just look at how hard it is getting people and employers hooked together right now. I mean, it's it's imperative that we have something.
But the system as we speak or sit today.
Yeah.
Is not sustainable.
Yeah. That makes sense.
And it's not reaching the people it needs to.
But you can learn nothing from my lesson about when the state takes. I know, I know, I know. But the, at the end of the day, that money still comes from the same people. Because, you know, my question for you on that same thing, where is that money gonna come from? Other than taxing per capita, per county? So.
They get funds from the, the state from Department of Labor. Department of Labor dictates that state has to provide workforce development.
Unfunded mandate.
Has to. So the state is dictated to do this. So that's kind of the.
It gets way too.
Right. The counties say, we can't afford to do this with the funds we have and we're not reaching the people we have, we're scratching the service. Here it is, you take it over. I I ultimately think the state would revisit it and. Come up with solutions to.
But in the meantime, in the meantime, while they're reinventing that way. Who's who are they suffering?
Or so it's not, not much is happening, huh?
Yeah.
It's like, no, I don't, not much has happened. No, until you figure out these.
Oh, people are getting paid.
Inner workings.
Staff. Okay. That makes, makes just another crisis on the horizon. Is there anything else you got?
That'd be it.
That'd be it? Mr. Gozar, do you have any activities or calls or anything?
I did not. Uh, tonight I have my first West Central Community Action Meeting tonight at six o'clock. And then tomorrow and Thursday, new supervisor school.
Take lots of notes, bring it back, I usually.
Are you going in morning?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be a little late tomorrow. I got a funeral at ten thirty about later.
Be sure to go and get stress calls for us girls because we like those.
What's that?
Be sure to pick up lots of stress calls for us girls because we like that.
Kyle.
Uh, just uh, last week was. Time here at the office, but the conservation, I'm gonna. Kind of feel some fires after Dan's article in the paper. I'm trying to put them fires on. The water won't kill you. And it's just deemed by the state to be. unfit for drinking, which it's no different than the well that water I drink every day, so don't think it's really bothering me. Okay. So I've been putting some of them fires out. I actually called a few people that were really. Fired up about us improving the place. So I figured they're the kind of the voices of that group. So I just went right to them and. Said that's, there's more to it. Be in the paper today. Thanks, Dan. So some of that stuff. And then this, you know. Roads yesterday was. Busy time. Oh, I wish I would have seen over that, now by nine here, the, I think the people are the same.
You're on their speed dial.
I think so, which I I appreciate them calling because otherwise you don't know, but. It's the people that never call and just, those are the ones that really appeal for it because they just.
But you can't fix it if you don't know their, they get.
Right.
Yeah.
It's always our gravel terrible and we need to do something else. Sure them that we're trying to spend their money as wisely as possible. We can pave every road in the county, but that wouldn't be very trustworthy responsible.
As soon, or Woodbury, but if they tried that, all that did is got them broke.
Then you got a mess because then you don't know what to do with them. But anyways.
But it's funny you say about my uncle Tom that's in here in Plymouth County. He said all the highways they have is like, in a way, almost like cancer because you can't fund to fix all those miles in one year's time. So they just slowly deteriorate.
Yep.
And you.
Like Woodbury's even started returning them back to gravel.
Yeah.
Turning the concrete up, putting them back to gravel.
And you know, the thing is, is if if you look at the overall number of miles we got, I actually had a couple call and I explained to them what we're. What we're doing with the, down by Heaton's or where we're gonna do a test. And hopefully that'll be a lot more cost effective to get these roads that are. Probably our most high, high, high use gravels. And go to them and do this, and then we leave more money to kind of mandate or work on that mandate, so to speak, but work on the other one. So I think. We've got plans is what I tell them. It's just, we can only afford to do so much, you know, unless they want to pay more taxes and I sure don't want to. You know?
Well, it seems like the state's gonna force their hand on paying more taxes on a local level anyway. That would be all right as long as they let us manage it.
Yeah. Yeah, don't get.
Get back on one side and take on the other, but let somebody local manage their, their funds, I think would be like further ahead. When some of these things, seem like we've gone backwards, mental health, workforce development.
Coming full circle.
Sometimes the wheels just need to fall off the wagon before you fix the bearings. Unfortunately, and then, well, yes, center meeting on Friday.
Okay.
About it.
All right. I uh, it's quarter after. Shani, um, you would be the next on our. Agenda for the day. If you'd like to come up, if I can, I got a few things I'll bring up at the end if necessary. Come up and give us an update on what you're up to. We appreciate it.
You're fine.
I knew I was.
Go on information. Like multiple things today, so. I know, getting fancy and everything. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I am obviously with the amount of stuff I have here, not gonna be able to go into extreme detail without taking too much of your time. But if you have any questions as we're going through, feel free to ask or, you know, contact me afterwards. Um, because it's a fairly long report today. Um, so last time I was here, we had discussed. Try City Barbecue Fest, but I didn't have financials for you. I do have them now. Um, they are, should be complete or pretty darn near complete. Um, we do sometimes have some things trickle in uh later, but so for income, we had. Um, as shown here, we had three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, little over that. Um, and expenses, we had approximately two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which gave us a total profit um of thirty-eight thousand this year. Um, we did have some expenses that um we won't have recurring this year, so. Hopefully, if things continue to go in the same direction as far as sponsorships and fundraising goes, um, that number will continue to grow. That is a pretty, pretty good um difference from previous year, twenty twenty-one. Obviously, we're coming right off of COVID that year. Um, so we had, uh, we usually, we're usually at about a wash as far as profit loss goes for barbecue. That particular year in twenty twenty-one, we were um under a thousand dollar loss. Um, but um, again, so like a thirty-nine thousand dollar increase um over the course of years, pretty darn good. That does include.
You guys do with the profit?
It goes back into the festival.
Never had one before.
Yeah, this is the first year we've had something like this, but.
Let you know.
The goal goes, it goes back into the festival and the goal with it is to eventually have it be a self sustaining event where we don't have to reach out nearly and depend on the. You know, on the extra grants and the fundraising and stuff quite as much. It's going to take some time to get to that point. Um, this year definitely helped and we're trying to think of ways to continue to grow this without, you know, raising the expenditure. Our goal is not to ev- as make more money, to spend more money. It is to eventually make this be a self sustaining event and adjust. And in nine years of doing this, I mean, to be at the point where we could have a profitable year like that is pretty amazing.
Because how much would you say businesses contributed? What, you know, with that dollar?
Um, yes, I had. Well, we had a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the state of Iowa with the meet in Iowa grant. So twenty-five thousand of that, you know, twenty-five thousand of it is that. Um, we had, my goal was. I should have to look back. It was eighty or eighty-five thousand dollars that we had in in sponsorships.
So that's about the level you need to get to.
Right, exactly. Seventy-five, maybe it was seventy-five.
You have one vendor that.
Yes.
Brought in a.
Yes.
Double what they got without.
We had two very large sponsorships this year, which were not um normal. And I can't, I would love to say that they would continue to do it at that level every year, but.
Did they see some return in their investment?
Yes, absolutely. And they.
And then they'll continue.
And and they are big on and promoting it to the community and to the area and they had, they had a lot of fun with it. So I'm hoping, you know, hopefully if their profits. And, you know, their businesses allow them to, they'll continue to do that. So.
Excellent.
Um, we're, we're hopeful that that will continue. So and and again, we had some, we're, we're talking about ways we can invest back into the, the. Event so that that profit can continue to grow. But we don't have to have the expenditure every year too. So we're. Always looking at ways we can tweak things. So, um, currently though, I'm working.
Out of the yard of your income, that twenty-five thousand state Iowa grant, that's.
That is also included in the income, yes.
Okay, any other in kind donations and all that?
All the donations and all of that. Yeah, sponsorships, money made at the event, all of those things are included in the income.
So now with that, twenty-nine thousand. And really cuts that profit.
Yes. And we just looked, we kind of looked at that as a big, great big gift this last year because they are continuing that meet in Iowa program, but they're not gonna offer that.
Well, no, I just, I just, no, I'm just saying, you'll see. Well, no, I just, I just, uh, no, I'm just saying, you'll see, no, yeah, they are broken down, I just wanted to try to help.
How many years is this been?
This is the ninth, yeah, that was the ninth year.
It didn't seem like it.
Yeah, no.
You said ninth, but I didn't know if that was directly.
Eight years, eight, eight years as a barbecue fest and one year on the brew and queue, which we did a separate, um, as a separate event during the, um, um, COVID, so that we didn't risk.
Covid the year after kind of screwed you up on your.
Twenty twenty-one, yes, twenty twenty-one did, did kind of play with that a little bit, but, you know, we didn't not expect, we, we expected it to, I mean, coming back with a full-size event, and it was still kind of in that, twenty twenty-one, the time of the event, we, there was another COVID outbreak locally at the exact same time we were hosting the event, it was kind of an iffy thing anyway, but we went forward with it. Thankfully didn't have anything health-wise that, you know, grew because of the event, but, um, you know, we getting back going is always, is, is always a risky endeavor, but we're happy that we can continue to have the festival and that we didn't have a huge loss, so.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, still working on that, we're working on vans and vendors, getting some, all that kind of stuff going for this year, some special entertainment.
Can I, uh, now I've been bringing this up at some of the other CDC meetings, but this board in particular wants to see more in the outside communities.
Yep.
And Tri-City, you, you talk about it a lot when you come here, and that's great, because it's a big event, and it's actually becoming pretty pop, or I guess you could say famous outside of our area, and I think you could build off it. And, you know, I'm, I'm, it's something we talked about when, 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 when your board was here.
Yep.
And, you know, what happens if, like, during the tractor pull, Westside has a big tractor pulling off, Manola has one, Charterhouse has their achievement day. If you had a little barbecue cook-offs in there, and then brought them to a statewide contest, or countywide contest, that, that culminates in a nice trophy here.
Absolutely.
For locals, I, I, I think that's, these are the kind of things that we're probably looking for from tourism, would you guys agree?
Actually, most of the small town things are over with, and you'd have champions from each town by the time this barbecue fest took place, and they could come right.
Come here and compete.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, Dow City has their big car show thing that's before that, I mean, you're, pretty much your major communities have something that the only thing, the only one that we really jump on is Sleswig, obviously, you know, I mean, so I mean, I, I would really challenge you to look at something like that, and, and you'd start to, you know, meet some of the things that we're, you know, we're really demanding from this board.
And, and I will get to some of that in a minute too.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, um, okay, another thing we had in this last quarter was the winter snow show, um, it didn't have a huge amount of growth from the previous year, but it still was well-attended. Um, a good note is that in the previous year, in twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, we had a loss of eight hundred dollars. We restructured how we did the event, um, we took out the middle, we, we no longer were the people selling the drinks, selling, doing some of that stuff, so we took out some of the major costs that we were having and, and gave that to Wesco, who actually made money off of it, so it was a win-win for both of us, we ended up, um, doing it more as a sponsorship um, type situation where we donated half of our sponsorships to Goodfellows, it was still a small amount for sponsorships, but we still, you know, and we, we just made two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, but it's a win, we didn't lose money this year. It's an event we can build, um.
Seemed like it was more popular.
Yeah, the community's showing up, and we got people from outside area, we had several people who came in from, um, other communities who came in and, um, even some farther away and said, wow, this is like, you know, like a Hallmark movie, so that is truly the exact feel that we were going for, so.
Absolutely.
Um, lots of things going on, we added the Santa Run this year, that was a hit, we didn't have a huge amount of entries, but we had like ten to fifteen entries, and that, to me, was, you know, we, we covered our costs, and people who did it had fun, and they're gonna go, and, and the people who watched had fun, and they're gonna go and talk about it. The lighted parade was more, uh, better attended, I still would like to see a lot more entries, but, um, it's, it's growing, and that's, it's, it's the sec, really the second year, technically the third, but really the second year as we are representing it now, so, um, you know, we're, we're happy with how it went in that regard, so lots of things happening, the kids had a great time, the people who came out all seemed to have fun, so, and the businesses, you know, seemed to do well off of it, so that's, you know, a win in our book, so. Um, that event, I think, went well, um, working on Manila Madness and setting up, uh, meetings, um, with the group to do, the, the cruisers to do the ride between Manila and us, so, um, there's some work in progress there, but that's one of the things I've been working on. Um, bigger thing right now is this Western Iowa Regional, Regional Guide, Tourism Guide, that is what I'm doing a lot of right now. There is restructuring at the state level for tourism, and so basically, um, there was relying on two people to cover the entire state as far as representing us, instead of having a region to look out, a person in charge of the region to look out for us, they have two people at the state level office to cover the entire state. Not just each county, but each community and each town itself, it's gonna take them some time to develop those relationships, um, as a region, we decided to stick together and to continue going forward with Western Iowa Tourism, we feel like we, we know us best, and we want to be able to promote us.
What counties are Western Iowa Tours?
Um, it's thirty, it's basically, I'll show you a picture of something else I have, it's like thirty-some counties, but it's this
Okay.
portion of the state, um, so we are doing at a regional level, we decided to put out a regional guide this year, um, and as such, I have been working with the communities across our county, um, contacting them, working with them as a first part, um, what we can do to get them, to get their events, their locations, any of that kind of stuff featured in the guide, there is no cost for them to submit entries for the calendar, so there's no cost out of it to them, other than a few minutes of them submitting their time. The businesses can do advertising in it, and that is paid, but the rest of it, like promoting trails, promoting campgrounds, promoting, you know, anything that would bring people to our region of the state, part of it is free, so I've been contacting them, trying to find the right contacts, and that's partly one of my alt, alternate goals, um, for the year too, but, um, trying to get them in there, there's gonna be thirty thousand of these guides distributed across Iowa and Eastern Nebraska. Um, it's also viewable online, so there's a lot of benefit for a little cost, because we can't really rely on the state putting us, we can submit all we want, but when they do their Travel Iowa Guide, they just generally heavily feature Des Moines and Eastern Iowa, that's where the big cities are, that's where people, you know, want to know, but really Western Iowa has a lot to offer, and we want people to know that, so, um, as a part of that, I'm gonna take a step, I don't know if it's in order, but as a part of that, as I'm working with these other communities, um, we're getting some good conversations going, finally. So I'm finally getting to the point where they're like, okay, yeah, we can do this contact thing, so I'm working with them to find out really what one of the content, when I was talking to Manila, one of their comments was like, well, we have this thing going on this day, and you guys, someone in Dennison has this other big event at the same time, and we're worried how that's gonna affect our fundraiser. And if we would have known you guys were doing this, then we would have made it a different day, and probably vice versa, because I can only say if two major things are happening on the same day, it's not gonna be a win for either one, it's gonna hurt both. Um, and they said, you know, and I, and as we're talking, we agreed, you know, nobody's out to get anybody, I think everybody wants everybody to succeed, but without the information out there, that place where we can all check and say like, hey, does anybody else have anything going on this day, you know, without the communication, it's not gonna be great, so.
Look at this weekend alone, the three things that are going on that I would want to go to all of them, but I literally have to figure out a way to.
Absolutely, and so, yes, and that's, and that's really it, so, um, we're talking about it, and I'm like, you know, tell me what we can do to get, like, we always have a goal at the beginning of the year to talk more, but it just doesn't happen, I'm like, do you want me to schedule weekly, or like, monthly emails, do you want me to come to your community, is there like, a meeting we can do together, like, with different people? What, you know, and it can be different for each community, but what can we do so that this doesn't happen, so that everybody knows we're on everywhere? So that's like this morning, and she was like, well, yeah, we have this going on with the golf course and this, and this, and this, but, you know, there might be some people in Dennis and I know this, but not everybody does, and, you know, there are people who would be interested, so, like, you know, working on that, that is, you know, and I'm starting to, I think, finally get some headway in this, um, finding the contacts we need to have, um, have them be trusting that, like, yeah, we really do want to reach out for everybody, so it's a work in progress, and it's going to take some relationship building, but we're finally after, I mean, I've been doing this for three years now, and finally getting.
Just in every community, there's somebody different that is a contact person.
Right, and it's not always the city, yes, exactly, like, sometimes it's the city, the city, sometimes it is the city, sometimes I reach out to the city and they're like, well, you should talk to this person, sometimes I can, I know automatically, um, you know, this person does this event, and, and they can help me get other people too, sometimes they're bringing people in, so it looks different in every location, and it's going to, because each community is different, and they have, some of them have their own little mini-chamber office, and they don't necessarily think that they want our help, but it's not even, I just wanted to know, one, that we're there, and two, that we would like to be a part of their community, I would like the county to feel like one big community, where, where lots of little towns that could help each other out tremendously, but right now it feels more like separation and togetherness, so it's been a challenge, and I have had this goal for years, but this, I think we're finally making some headway this year, so.
Yes.
Thankfully, um, and, and, and as Ty said, you know, we had brought that barbecue thing up, and I would love to be able to do something like that, with as many of those communities as want to, to take part in something like that, so it's getting this communication open so that we can add those things in there, um, so that we can make it more, um, like that. Otherwise, yeah, I've had a lot of other things going on, I had an entertainment blogger from Sioux City Com, um, she's looking at, she originally just wanted to feature Dennison, and I was talking to her about some of the other things in the area, as well as some other types of things, and, and instead of just having the one date, she was looking at businesses and whatever, and Dennis and we have plans for her to come back and check out some things around the county and around different events around the county and, and in Dennison as well, so, um, that was a, a pretty good thing, um. I have some other things going on as far as, um, you said I'm working with other people, we have a vendor thing coming up here that Mark in the Park is putting on, that I'm kind, in the state level that we're, um, hoping can benefit all the events in the community, um, that use food vendors, the high school, there's so many groups, you know, the uptown market, or uptown groups that use food vendors, so that people can really know that what they're, you know, that they're eating is safe, and, and have, you know, the people who are here are gonna get sued and all of that stuff, so we're working on that food safety thing. And then the last thing that I really wanna hit on bigger is, um, not that we have to focus on it a lot, but I did get the, excuse me, the twenty twenty-one Tourism Impact Statement from the state, I have a more in-depth one as far as statewide, that has all the statewide detail as well, but this is, the Crawford County one has the graphs and stuff on it, um. And upper left, I just kinda hit a couple little things, and you can see, um, again, this is twenty twenty-one, not twenty twenty-two, that information is not ready yet, um, but we were on a really nice upward trend until COVID, and that's not to be unexpected, you know, we all knew obviously tourism was gonna take a hit during COVID, because literally people couldn't, you know.
But they don't.
It was shut down, so what were you supposed to do, but, um, uh, we did have a very significant rebound from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, even though twenty twenty-one wasn't an ideal year still, and then we were still suffering, and there were still a lot of you know, question marks for tourism and, and businesses, in twenty twenty-one, we still made a pretty good rebound from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, um. That part on the left, right here, next, right next to it, where it says visitor spending and taxes and stuff, that fifteen point seven million dollars, um, was a direct impact from tourism in Crawford County during the year of twenty twenty-one, so that, again, is a year that we were not doing our best, we still brought in fifteen point seven, uh, million dollars due to tourism directly in Crawford County that year, um, obviously not our best number, if you look at the chart to, to the left of it, but um, we are expecting increases as well for twenty twenty-two, based on what we have seen, um, at community level and at our events and all of that, and as a part of that, we can, we know not all of that visitor spending is due to, like, my job, a lot of, you know, it's also hotels, it's also, you know, uh, people driving through, spending money at the gas stations, doing whatever, but we do know that even barbecue alone brings in one to one and a half million dollars, um, locally for, uh, tourism, so there is some benefit, and that's not all I do either, I am there to help all the businesses, the, the hotels, all of those people increase, and we would like to see that continue to increase throughout the county, not just Dennis and, um, whatever we can do again to help those other communities as well, so. Lots of information there, I have statewide information, if anybody wants the report, I can definitely send it to you, um.
So Shani. They figured that up for you, right, I mean, um, they prepared for the state of Iowa, then how do they get it down per county, like Crawford County specifically, is because of our population?
No, they.
Because do they take into consideration the Tri-City barbecue?
Yes, absolutely, all of the spending, um, they, it, it, they have.
Cause I don't know how they, how they, that's why I figured it had to be, just be a formula that they.
They have, you know, and that's probably, uh, something that I could get better information from you if I, after I speak with my, the regional office that gives me this information.
Sales tax receipts, stuff like that.
A lot of it is, you know, like, like hotels isn't easy one to track, some of the, you know, the gas issues, that's an, you know, easier one to track, they have legitimately, we have a service, we don't subscribe to it, because it costs a fair amount of money, and, you know, we've, as a.
And budget.
We don't, yes, exactly, we have a budget, um, we don't have it in the budget to do this, but they have ways to track where these people are coming from, spending their gas, where, you know, where basically, they can see who comes where, how that's getting here, where they found us to come through internet, it's amazing, the level of detail that they can find, I do the regional, um, the statewide summit, uh, webinars, and they, every time, show the forms, and they can show you like, yep, this is the amount of people that come here from Denver, this is the amount, they can track it by city, they can track it by state, um, where they're going to the county, to the city level, so that information due to the web is on phones, and that's a lot of it too, is, is your phone, they track where you're coming from, where you're traveling to, how long you stay, based on phones, so.
So that could be good or bad, depending.
Yeah, exactly, so they can see, you know, it, it, it's very visible what you're doing, um, at, oh, you know, at, at a strange level to think about, but I don't have, I can't tell you the exact details on that, but I can get that information for you if you wanna know.
You're always welcome to speak with Shani over her nice new office.
Yes, and that's the thing too, like, anytime you have a question about what I'm doing or have an idea, definitely feel free to, uh, stop over, give me an email, give me a call, because the more, I mean, I, I do the best I can do, but I'm a one-person department, so, I mean, like, I don't always think of things either, so if an idea comes up, you know, like a barbecue thing, um, with the little communities, or a question about, hey, what's this name, you know, I would be more than happy to answer it or find out the answers if I don't know.
This was an awesome report.
Thanks, thank you very much. I learned a lot today.
On your winter snow.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the income versus the expenses, and you listed the Goodfellows donation as an expense, would that be, should be in the income, or?
No. That was a donation that we gave out, so we took sponsorships.
You gave it out, you didn't take it in.
We took sponsorships, and then we, we, as an event, it has always been our goal for that, a particular event to be something that gives back to the community, especially Christmas time. Um, and so we used to give half of our proceeds that we would get from drinks, the beverage sales, to Goodfellows, but we were, obviously, like, we would end up giving more than we actually wanted, because we made very little.
That makes sense.
Right, yeah, if we didn't give that donation, we would have made a whole lot of, a whole lot of money, but, but our goal with that event is to give back to the community, so, um, half of, yeah, half of our sponsorships went to Goodfellows.
We gave a little bit more to the horses this year, was coming in.
And that was covered through sponsorships as well, so that.
Yeah, Shani.
I'm just on the upcoming event, uh, I'd see a pretty large one for the county that you're missing, and that's the County Fair in July.
Yes, that is not something that I work on, though, upcoming events is things that I particularly, uh, put on or handle, it's not necessarily things that are happening in the county. Um, not to say that I couldn't help them out, but they generally don't.
Have you ever reached out to them and see what you guys could collaborate on, I mean, they're wanting to do some bigger things, that's sure is my understanding.
And I have, I have been, actually, just recently, last week, we're talking to them about, um, vendor options, because they're looking at expanding vendors and stuff like that, and so I have been in communication with them, I just don't have it listed there, because it's not something that I run, those are all just the things that I run or I attend, as far as, like, the legislative night, um, the red, white, and blue, those are all things I put together as.
Correct, okay, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great report today.
Oh, goodness, have a big one. This is the most.
Okay, move on to our ten thirty, we're a little late, we're a little behind, but thank you for your report, Shani, appreciate it. Discuss, take action, crime policy renewal. You see an insurance with Tam's agency?
Yep, there are not many insurance companies that cover this type of policy, um, so, yeah. I think it was in the folder.
Uh-huh, yeah, it's right here, I kinda knew we were gonna be talking about.
It's basically to cover, um.
I haven't signed everything yet.
Um, employee theft, um, so we give them an updated list of our employees, um, let's see.
Is this early?
It is, yeah, right here.
And did, how much did the premiums raise, since we probably don't dig into this?
It hasn't, it runs under two thousand a year.
I make a motion to approve the crime policy renewal of the agency insurance.
Second, we got a motion and a second on the floor to approve the crime policy renewal with Tam's agency, do we have any further discussion?
I just had a question, have we ever filed a claim with this policy?
No.
And it's just for if employees steal something from the county, is that how it works, and we can prove, and we can prove that it was actually stolen?
Our credit card. Our credit cards, they we give them that information, like the number of credit card holders that we have.
So that's our biggest fear would be that.
Probably.
Remind us again how much that is annually.
I don't know the exact amount. It's usually under two thousand dollars.
Any further questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye aye.
Oh, no. Next on the agenda is the open RFP for the server room at Sioux City. This is the envelope. Barely had the one. Yeah, timely. So we had one bid that got in on time. There was one that was just a little behind. So, yep. And it's assess control and security. Jake County Courthouse, Advanced Communication Services, three sixty-two Main Street, Manila. And that's what Cory Gasco is in. Now, this is for the communications part of the server room, excuse me, the IT section of the city center building. So for any questions out there. And.
And the security side of the building itself.
And the security of the building itself. So like that badge entry.
Badge entry and the camera system surrounding you.
Okay. Which there'll be some labor to building this box server room, which will be. I won't say fireproof, but fire retardant type thing. Hopefully fireproof as it can be anyway. Let's see. Okay, so this would all advanced communications, the family owned. Okay, this is everybody want me to read through all this or? Okay, the the date of the proposal is on the ninth and the total bid is fifty one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. So just short of fifty two thousand. Project start date would be March first, twenty twenty-three. And the completion date is projected for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So it's the thirty day window and and proposal will be covered from start to finish. All items are delivered by our employees at no additional charge. All materials will come with their normal manufacturer warranties, labor installation, fifteen thousand materials is thirty-six nine twenty-two, which brings us to the total fifty-one nine twenty-two. The references were on here. I'm assuming that you had an opportunity to go through some of them without.
We just opened it.
Okay.
Nothing's been reviewed.
Oh, okay. For the references. Gotcha. So we've got those listed on here to check with Smitty B. We're valid and then the sheriff's department. Now we've got the shirt certificate of insurance liability, which hundred thousand on general liability, two hundred thousand. Parameters or count and all those types of things are all addressed on here. And terms and conditions bid is if is accepted fifty percent deposit will be required required prior to ordering materials. Remaining fifty percent will be due on upon completion of the job. Do you have any other further comments that you would like to make about this? Is this within your range realm of where you thought price would be, et cetera, et cetera?
Seems pretty straightforward and falls within the guidelines of the of the RFP. I haven't seen any from what we just discussed here, I haven't seen any discrepancies so far. Keep in mind that I have not reviewed in detail because I it was just opened. So I will caveat to the board that this RFP was dependent upon the construction RFP as far as timelines and dates. So we may need to make some adjustments in that capacity.
Okay, which as far as construction, but I mean, and if we would go through with this, I mean, so that he could order materials and and then them prices not change on him, I would say that that would probably be something important to get out right away. Dave?
The equipment listed here, I mean, do you have problem, any issues getting it? I mean, is it all?
No, I the equipment was on Jake's for preference. So that's what was bid in there. I guess if you're for sure you're going to do the project, I would order it now and then, yes, sit on it. I mean, if it takes till January or June to put in, that that's still be it. But at least I think I get it. You know, it's going to keep going up.
And I mean, I know Muraki, that was which was explicitly stated in that RFP, this shipping is pretty, pretty crazy right now. So.
So does this match or greatly improve the current technology? I mean, at the at our current building where we're at, now we're going to go to a different building. So is everything the same or is everything improved? We talked about the badge entrance. Do we have badge entrance now?
No.
Okay.
And there is no camera system over at the annex.
One of our objectives was to ensure that like especially where the medications or anything like that, that it had a secure, a secure area and there would be basically surveillance on that area and and then the outline outside of the building in particular for security reasons.
And then it'd be ready to go if they decide that they want to use badges as far as their time tracking.
There's no stipulation because that system is not tied to any sort of timekeeping.
I think with how many people everywhere, the timekeeping for them would have to be an app type thing, I think, pretty much.
Yeah, it would have to be separate in its entirety from a broken badge.
Yes, and I will mention that county has used ACS in the past and within those courthouse walls and have had very good working relationship.
I think that's that's pretty accurate. Cory's work in relationship with the county has been exemplary.
So is there some things from a construction standpoint that need to be done prior to March one?
Yeah.
So if if we're not done by March one, does that Cory, from a timeframe, can you work it into your business schedule in June or July or? Okay.
So, yeah, that was my because the room isn't specified to build out until the the original RFP, construction RFP was completed.
And we're just saying we get the bids back for the construction part, we can always tell them that they probably need to focus on that room.
Right.
That room.
Someone will be at the doors and stuff. If you're leaving them alone and changing them, that'll be a
Kind of gonna act sooner.
I take any action right at this time, but let Jake just review it quick, see if it hits every. I think to approve something and maybe like what they all.
Till next week.
No, I think we can come back.
Pending his review, maybe.
Or we can come back right before citizen input, take action.
Okay.
I like that. I was gonna say otherwise.
Good job.
Right.
Take you long. I wouldn't think it would take you long or you would be to help develop that.
Right. And it was pretty specific. So.
We'll give her a once over and then come back to us.
Yeah, before citizens input, which, you know, in the neighborhood of ten fifty-five.
Yeah.
Probably later than that. All right.
All right. I'll do that.
All right. So that'll be tabled until that time. Okay, next on the agenda, the resolution for compensation board. Twenty twenty-three, seven compensation. Discuss and take action. Okay, everybody get their little notes in front of them. What is the pleasure of the board? Who would like to go first?
When you read up, what was recommended?
I've got the.
You haven't or you?
Yeah, could you read that?
The auditor, county attorney, recorder and treasurer, the recommendation is a fifteen percent increase sheriff twenty-six percent and supervisor seven percent.
And then we had the proposed little numbers for reductions on whether it's seventy-five or eighty percent. Anybody have any comments they'd like to bring to the board? And that's the official proposal. Anybody have any comments?
Well, I think everybody should, I mean, there's a lot we're dealing with and when you look at our overall growth was not near what it had been in the past. Looking at almost half less growth in our county revenue. And I want everybody at least be aware, conscious that our decision today reflects our overall county budget along with what we see coming down the pike with state legislation and some potential property taxes that are going to be affecting us going forward.
While we're taking in the room, thought process.
Thousand dollars of new assessed.
And that's part of general and part rural.
Right.
It's not all.
Significantly lower.
Last year we were at about six hundred dollars. So significantly, I mean, it's going to impact the budget regardless if it's general or rural significantly. Four hundred fifty thousand dollar cut right off the top of the set. Assessments, evaluations.
I think that it's Craig, did you have any?
I'm just trying to learn, I guess, what the process is.
Then I'll I'll just, I'll just, I I would like to bring the point that we we were taking this inflationary numbers into account. So we were trying to find fiscally prudent raises that fit into this year's budget and it's been pretty tough. And especially when you consider, you know, the strain that'll be on our budget from the lack of valuations and we're surely wanting to hold taxes as low as possible. We all pay taxes in this room as well. But I think it was a lot of thought went into this one and I mean, it's obviously from what the board recommended or the county board recommended versus what this board's able to actually achieve is is a difference, significant difference in that regard. But I do believe that it's still a fair and for the most part, I'd call it sustainable if we if we went to the a different number that we, I don't know, everybody didn't, I'll talk about this, but I mean, we all went home and thought about it and I don't know. We'll see here in a minute what everybody's conclusion was. At least that's coming from me. I mean, we wanted to try to be fair and just, but we also got to realize that our budget's limited. You know, I mean, we've been catching grief for the last week about eating more rock and I mean, we we really go on, go to lengths to in each department. And I was actually very pleased with different departments and their and their budget assessments coming going forward. They came in with good, honest proposals. Some of them were probably a little higher than we can afford. But I think we'll we'll be able to work that out. Or at least in what we think we can afford. And so that'll be that. But this is about taking care of the the elected officials. So what's the pleasure of the board here?
I think in our discussions, we talked about the number three percent was something that
That's what's fair. That's on here as auditor, three percent approved salary, six to six thousand two fifty-two eighty-one. County attorney, three percent with the salary of one hundred and twenty-six thousand six seventy-five fifty. Recorder, three percent, sixty-six thousand two fifty-two eighty-one. Sheriff, five point two with a salary of ninety-four thousand nine eighty-three twenty-five. Supervisors recommending for themselves a zero percent, just to try to keep things going up with the stipend for the chairman at seven hundred and fifty dollars. Treasurer, three percent with an income of sixty-six thousand two fifty-two eighty-one. Those are the way the numbers shake out. If we do the three percent across the board with the sheriff getting a higher one, this is compensation board recommended higher and the supervisors choosing to not take a raise at this time to just do our part.
I think it's important to note, I mean, this is putting an increase of sixteen thousand seven twenty-nine fifty on our budget on just the payroll alone. There's also always all the your incidentals that come along with that, whether it's the hypers contribution or those types of things. So I I think that there's been a fair assessed value in this and
I mean, with with the sheriff being at five point two five, I think Kyle made a good point that we have met the criteria back blue. And so there is there a reason that we need to have to compensate him more than anyone else? Or did we just do it flat across the board?
We can't choose to do him lower. Everybody gets the same percentage.
It can only be reduced an unequal percentage all the way across the board.
So he got a higher recommendation. So by reducing it, you know, eighty-one percent, that gives him a higher.
And then by the supervisors taking nothing, that kind of helps establish a little difference in there.
Oh, that helps a little.
Yeah, we're the only one that can tweak our own.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And, you know, we are only setting wages or compensation for elected officials and what they do with their departments and what percentage of their
On the second, when they're that when they're deputies.
On their deputies.
On the third floor.
They we haven't dictated what they did or just doing it for elected officials. And then they make the decision of what raises they want to pass on to their employees.
But they too will get at least a three percent if you figure it across that unless they would have thirty percent. And and in some departments, they're actually doing, somebody has got a promotion or something is through. You know, people move moving on.
It's only for elected officials.
Yeah. But that's all we're we're deciding here. Okay, Craig, any other questions? Obviously, Dave.
You know, with the back of blue, I think they use the Iowa State Patrol lieutenant up in my belief, like a two point five percent this year. So five point two is we're still working on moving them forward.
But they have tweaked that just a little bit, you know, as far as they're in those comparables, you know, with the requirement in education things according to the legislation. You have to be comparable.
Well, it's it's about as clear as mud yet.
Yeah, it still is, but we're doing our best to.
At the end of the day, I think the biggest takeaway, at least at least for me, is we still have to oversee the entire county budget and the services we provide. And what I never want to see is these huge up and down swings with our levy rates or where our salaries are at. Because there was times in the past where we had to look at cutting big time. And we want to make sure that things are sustainable for all of our employees so that we don't have to start making drastic decisions on the services and the departments.
Or letting people go. Things like that.
Even our bigger departments, I mean, just for public consumption, our debate, our bigger departments, which secondary road and public health, we're working on trying to really even work on those budgets and clean them up. And I think we've made some headway on that this year alone. So I mean, that will obviously vary with what's necessary to perform their mission. But I mean, we're looking at ways to streamline all the way through. I mean, this is kind of to me, it's a mandate of this board to get taxes under control. I mean, we know that we're in a county that has higher taxes than normal. But I don't ever want this to be perceived that that we don't you know, that oh, we don't approve, we don't appreciate what the employees do. In fact, we do. You get a pay raise, I mean, in in a year that, you know, some people probably didn't because their companies couldn't afford to give one. And I can speak to that, you know. But I still work to try to do that myself even, but it's been tough. So I would like to say that I think that I think the board went to do its due diligence on on really trying to find ways to be fair. But also be fair to people that write our checks. So anyway, I would enter entertain a a motion. If we're done discussing, actually, we can discuss more after the motion. if we're done discussing. Actually, we can discuss more after the motion.
I will make the motion to approve a three percent raise for the auditor, three percent raise for the county attorney, three percent raise for the recorder, five point two for the sheriff, zero for the supervisors and three percent for the treasurer.
I will second that.
Would you mind stating that as a reduction of the, what's that first? Thank you.
Reduced by eighty percent.
You said supervisors to zero.
Zero.
Correct.
Supervisors to zero, so.
So there's a hundred percent reduction.
Hundred percent reduction in that and then the stipend remains the same as it's been. Okay. And this is a resolution. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussions? Hearing none. Ms. Hayden?
Aye.
Mr. Mulbar?
Aye.
Mr. Dozar?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
About's aye. Next, the tax credit for volunteer emergency service provider.
That was sent out to us via email.
And I'd also like to say before we move on too quickly here, thanks to the compensation board for their efforts. It's great. They appreciate it. And to the department heads. Do you have something for us or Mr.?
Well, this is a rough draft and it's been a team effort. I mean, there've been a lot of hands and touches. Dwayne has left notes too. So what was circulated last week was a draft with comments about kind of which, what way does the board want to go on certain issues? You'll see the comments both on the side of the draft and Dwayne has left his comments on a separate page. It should be all included in what I circulated out. So some things to, to kind of hone in on is this gonna be a tax credit? And Dwayne can help me out with this, but I believe the process would be of course, an assessment by the assessor. When an application made of the assessor for this credit then goes to the auditor's office to verify that the qualifications are met. And then go to the treasurer's office to apply credits to homestead. Now, how that would look and what the details would be, like for example, on article two, section two, there was an immediate question on service, emergency provide service volunteers that live in the county or operate in the county. Now, we have providers that don't live in the county that, that work as a mercy provider for the county, but I don't know if proper county can be in the business of giving them homestead credits in their county. So then you go on to subsection B in section two of article two and it talks about can this credit pass on? And if so, to who? Unremarried widows, do we want it to transfer to widows at all? Or do you want it to be specific to the emergency provider themselves? And so that's something that the board will have to talk about and discuss. Dwayne, you have, you have notes on those, don't you?
Yeah, I think you pretty much get it, you know. Kind of do it like a homestead credit. Unfortunately, it's gonna take, you know, some learning to do it and, and some steps, but I guess that's all part of it. I think after we would maybe the assessor's office would take the certification and make sure it's right. And, you know, kind of in a nutshell, there would be maybe a parcel number or a name and the amount of the credit. We'll go to the auditor and they would look it over and say, yes, it's good. Then it would go to you guys to be approved that list. Which is how we do homesteads and militaries and family farm and all that stuff. Ultimately, the worst of the prizes is the approval.
Yeah.
And then it would be, the application would be made annually. The scheduled credit is outlined in section three of article two. Miss graduated depending on the amount of years of the emergency service volunteer. And at twenty years of service or more, it passes out at five hundred dollar credit. And of course, these are, you know, we borrowed language from those legislation that was before the state house, it didn't go anywhere, but that's where these numbers came from. Of course, the board would reserve the right to change those credits if, if that's what the board wanted. And so at this point, what, you know, it's a discussion take action, but really what I presented to the board today is a draft. So I think it's not ready for action. I have no final draft for signature today. But if I could get some final input that I can present a final draft next week for the board's consideration.
I like the section three, you know, where the schedule is, you know, once they get their certification, they can, the way I read it, I, that they could get up to a hundred dollars in that first year, two to four, if they get their certification. And what I like about that is it encourages our younger, who are trying to incentivize to, to join, if I'm reading that correctly, that they get certified, they could possibly get a hundred dollars in that first two to four years, once they're certified.
Correct.
That's what I like that because I was worried that trying to get more people to join, but you really have to be there for four years for to get anything. But once you've proven that you're taking your courses and getting certified, you can take advantage of that hundred dollars. So I really like that part of it.
Say, Mulbar, you have something?
Yeah, a question about that firefighter one is, has there been any issues with classes and being able to get certified?
Boy, did you bring my paper.
It's a nightmare right now.
Yeah. We, we cannot get the fire service training bureau, which is under the office of the fire marshal's office to administer exams, the written and the physical in Crawford County. The closest we can get is, there's some in Harlan, maybe two a year. But then they limit the classes to, is it thirty core years or less?
I think it's twenty.
Twenty.
So test, the test sites only allow twenty. So if they have a class, they tie up their testing.
Yeah. And so the last class that we taught here for about three months, we, we tried to get people into a test close by Harlan or Atlantic for about six months and there was no empties. So.
One of our guys drove to Iowa City two years ago to do the test.
Really?
Yeah.
Third Iowa City.
Iowa City.
So like, do we even have a fire school in Ames anymore that?
Yeah, but, and I don't know if they give the tests there.
Yeah.
If they do, I think they limit it to twenty. So it's just, and we've recently, we've made some contacts again with the fire marshal's office to have, to show them the facility that you guys have helped support. And said, you know, what do we have to do to get a, you know, a, a testing day here? And they said, in their opinion, they have plenty. And I said, well, I really hate to send our people, you know, two hours away to take a volunteer, send them two hours away to take a test, you know, and it's just, this is really difficult. So, but I know Holt has been contacted. I'm not sure if they can get any movement on them or what, but, you know, I think every fire department out there has said they will gladly pay whatever costs are involved for paying the instructors. There is a fee, is it twenty-five bucks for, for the test, I think, but you know, we've got to pay extra to get the instructors here to administer the test. Or proctor, if we would be more than willing to do that, but so far, if anybody has any in with.
I think a lot of it's like your school bus drivers. You ain't got enough of them, you ain't got enough instructors. So you're kind of limited to what you have.
My suggestion would be was state law says you have to be trained to the firefighter one eleven. Don't say you have to be certified. We have a beautiful training facility down here. We can Crawford County certify them in the lack of getting state certification. I mean, they'll sit through all the same training, do all the same practical and hands-on stuff, but we have, to get them to that state certification has become almost impossible.
Most of our, like, when you and I went through firefighter one, I was mostly local instructors.
We have, but they would, you could get certified then.
Yeah.
The state was very eager, easy to work with.
I mean, but you could bring, we could get them up to the level of standard with local trainers. Right. Yeah, that was my point.
I think the verbiage here then would take care of it because it says upon reaching the first level of certification, which is being trained here in Crawford County.
To the level of that.
Okay, so we don't have to, okay, that, I think that's.
So I think that, I think that that kind of gets rid of having to have actually the firefighter one certification.
Okay.
I think it, and.
But you'd have to.
Colin's the.
You would have to change the works. The verbiage would have to change. And that's what the board wanted to do.
So the, since, you know, upon reaching the first level of, level of certification for the volunteer service provider, so.
That's where my question.
So if you use an old army term, could we call it a, a, yeah, give them a certificate of completion?
But we wouldn't want to have any assumptions or any misunderstandings what that level is. And I think that because of the fact that we're trying to get a younger group of people, anything we can do to help them get that hundred dollars sooner is to our advantage. You know, you don't want to make it impossible goal to reach because you can't get the training. And so first four years, you're going to be out there working side by side and you're getting nothing. Which brings me to my second concern that I'm a hundred percent in favor of showing appreciation to our volunteers. It's about time. But what I, what I worry about is the renters, the people who are renting, the young people that are living with mom and dad yet because they just can't get out on their own. They're working side by side and because they don't own property, they're not fortunate enough to be able to qualify for a home. We're getting nothing. And, and unfortunately renting is, sometimes you're doing that for the first, who knows how long and that you're working side by side and because you don't own a home in Crawford County, you don't get anything. And that's where I kind of, I have a concern for those folks that don't own a home. I also have a, not a concern, but you and I, well, we're history. I'm sure the homestead doesn't always get taken off immediately. You know, I, I just, when I used to look at people's houses, it's like, they don't really live there and they're, they got the homestead on that house, you know, so all of that homestead isn't always easy and.
But they have to apply.
They have to apply and they don't.
If they don't apply, there's nothing we can do. We can't hold their hand.
I know. Or if they move out and turn it into a rental.
And the same thing here, you know, we, we can't hold their hand. We will do whatever, you know, always, you know, help them fill out the application if they need help.
Yeah.
So it'd be renewed every year?
Yeah. So I think after the first year, it would be pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go get the memo.
Yeah.
It would have to be recertified and rehaterified on it.
You know, in the bank, you know, you, you fill the form out and you're like, hey, I could do this.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Do we know how many total volunteers we have in the county?
So I, I think Jean kept that list that time.
Well, I have on paper today, but I don't have that.
If I recall correctly, there was about two hundred total on there. And I believe there was around seventy that would qualify, just going through the list, you know, stick comparing that list to the homestead list.
Those numbers sound, because Jerry was going through them too, and that's when she realized.
One of you guys kept.
I think Jerry has it because I think she was, you know, knowing of people in Dallas city that actually own their home and they weren't on that list. That's how that kind of came about.
Yeah. And so they're for homes there after that.
Yeah. So the other part of that then, you know, if we keep in this section, I see there were some notes about it. Where it's going to follow, if I look in section two, it follows the homestead basically. So, and we talk about widows and widowers. It's not a concern. It's just a thought that if it's bound the homestead and let's say that the kids move into the house that mom and dad lived in, mom lives into a home and that homestead stays on there, it follows along and it has, you know, I, I still, you know, it's not going to be a big percentage.
Reapply every year though. So if they don't reapply, I mean.
Typically, if the month, if, if, if they move into a care facility.
Okay.
If some, if their house is vacant, the homestead stays on it. It's in Iowa code. So and if they rent it out, then the homestead gets removed.
Automatically?
Well, if we know it, we recommend to you guys to remove it. That's not saying that, that this supervisor's always approved that list. But, and we also have to know it.
Yeah.
You know?
I know, I know.
And so, you know, it needs to say it, but we don't go and look and say, oh, I think they're in the nursing home.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for the.
You can't fix all the holes of our tax system.
Yeah.
No matter how hard the legislature drives.
Or looking for the things that we didn't, that we might not have thought about, just turn to, you know, go well.
I think that language came from that state bill, right? And that, I, I think that was like Colin addressed earlier. I think a lot of that warrior played from that.
So do we care if widows and widowers remarry? Do they still get to keep that as a, because, well, and that's kind of where oh, I got it here. I see it because I hear it. And then what about a person that was disabled while in the line of duty? They no longer are on the service, but they were, you know, that one, I really think we should keep in. That, that I would, I would never want to penalize that. So that.
If they became disabled for some reason.
In the line of duty. I would hate to take away that because they got hurt while they're not taking care of.
Mr. Mulbar has something, please?
I do. Um, along the lines of, of being disabled along the line of duty, definitely, I think that should be left in. I think we got a note too. This is, we're not raising the levy rate to cover this.
That's correct.
We're using tower funds. The back, so. We're not raising taxes to do that. The other thing I think about with widows, you think about someone who has a wife who'd been married to a fireman for twenty years, who raised potentially their kids while they were off on fire, or not raising, but were taking care of them and doing all the things behind the scenes to enable that fireman to do the duty to serve us, our public. It means a lot to me and they should not be left out. And twenty years of serving on a fire department and serving our community is a tremendous feat. So I think this should be included in it as well, especially knowing that this is coming from our tower funds to help support our firemen.
Think about the Thanksgiving dinners when it was all ready to go and they got called out and we've had to carry on without them.
My father served forty-two, I served thirty.
Yeah, so.
My grandfather fifteen, so.
Yeah. And that's a good, very good point to point out where the funds are actually coming from and how that's working.
And not just, you know.
Do we have an official, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, not, not just the call, you call it more, but I know personally, the high risk nature of having a feed line bales of the firemen around me that have helped me out in fires, but come back the next day and the following day and make sure that things are looked after even beyond the fire being put out. And that wife is there supporting that fireman the whole way through.
Absolutely.
Are there any other changes that the board would like to incorporate?
I think that we need to dress remarried as a widow. That's a small, but that's just to make clarification on that.
So you're put like widow, whether remarried or not remarried, something that I'm sure.
You're saying one remarried, then they, or did you say that they remarried and they might become?
I'm gonna just be that devil's advocate that I always am. So you get married and then the widow actually passes away. So then you've got somebody that's, it's five hundred dollar.
The, the caveat to all this is it has to be renewed every year annually. So some of that will fall through and get caught in the checks and balances of the annual renewal.
Okay, so he would, that, the, that, they would have to come in and talk to the local fire.
So the fire chief would still have to fill out the form every year. Okay, I'm sorry. I kind of misunderstood where you're going. So you're going, if it wouldn't get checked, which as Kyle pointed out, it's gonna get reviewed every year. So.
So let me ask this then. So what we're, what, are you looking at this would be beyond their scope of as the volunteer and after they retire as a volunteer, this would continue on? Is that what we're, is that what we're addressing here?
That was in that section right there. They're talking about the widows and the women. So that's basically saying that the actual firefighter.
We're gonna need to dive into that because we just want to make sure that we remain sustainable.
Correct.
Well, that's just.
I mean, do.
And that's, I think.
And if we do, if you would do something like that, I mean, what is the criteria that establishes you as a retiree? Because I served short of ten and, and I, I, I mean, I don't feel like I'm entitled to something. I appreciated my service for that and I learned a lot and I actually had a good time.
This is the time to.
Two A addresses that.
What's that?
Section two A addresses that.
This is the time to have those questions and make sure that we're all in full understanding of, uh.
At least twenty-five years, so twenty-five is the gap or the minimum. What's that? You've achieved something in your life?
You can't.
I know I can't, but I have achieved.
Thank you for your service.
Alternatively. The unmarried widow may qualify for this credit.
Anytime I read anything that Colin has written, I have to read it very slowly and make sure.
A lot of this has been lifted from other attorneys. It's all lawyers.
Lawyers speak, that is in the, uh, those people very important.
The board's going to have to, yeah, every year you're going to look at the list and approve or disapprove. Or, you know, maybe if it grows, which, you know, my hope is it grows to be more than we can afford and we have to, you know, you have to make a special condition and cut the benefit in half or something, you know?
I have absolutely no qualms with doing this for, in particular for the wire rent. I mean, the time you're, are a fireman.
I'd also like to speak to, um, the other little concern that I would have is that it's, uh, ten percent of your taxes, correct? And so if you have.
Primary residence.
Primary re, primary residence. So if your taxes are only a thousand dollars, let's say you live in a small house in a smaller community and, uh, somebody else lives and your taxes are five thousand. That fire, firefighter lives in the smaller home isn't getting as much as the person that lives in a more expensive home. And I'm all about just keeping it all even because they're all out there doing the same job and, uh, you know, just because I have more taxes than I pay, I get more because I'm frugal and I live in a smaller house, I don't get as much, so. Or I live in a smaller community.
Ten percent, you know, and just make a maximum five hundred dollars.
Well, I'm just trying to, you know, because when you're working side by side with somebody and they're getting more than you are, it, it just.
And I know that language came from the state legislation.
Okay, I'm just looking at all of the, you know, how to keep it fair, uh, not, you know.
I like that, that's, that's actually a good point.
Thought, um, as long as.
So I mean, as your, as your increment grows by your number of years, that would always be the same for everybody on the list.
We're inventing the wheel here, so it's time to, uh, think about every cog in it and how.
They're going to get it perfectly around the first time.
Well.
I mean, is there a reason why?
I want to start with a flat tire.
Why we did a fixed amount for about years of service except for once you hit twenty? Then we went to ten percent or five hundred dollars?
Yes, you know, that's kind of where, that's kind of where I was going a little bit.
Right, I mean, is there a reason why it was not?
It was in that state.
So that's how the state did it, was just they set a flat fee until you got to the twentieth year and then they put in a percent.
Like Colin says, you know, I'm, I'm sure a bunch of attorneys with the legislative committee probably spent who knows how many hours writing up that, you know, because it wasn't proposed as a maximum of five hundred.
Just max out five.
That's what I would do.
Well, yeah, because.
It's maxed out of five hundred, get rid of the percent, crap for twenty years of service.
I, I would concur with that.
Okay, that's just, you know.
Five hundred dollars.
Some people might just choose to live in a small house and the taxes are low and some people, and they don't get the same thing and they're doing the back same job. Just.
I mean, we, and, and I, there sure isn't something against the people that live just outside of a barrier, you know, Crawford County, I mean, we ain't trying to punish them for living, but we sure would like them to live in our county.
The ones that I've talked to that serve within this county that live outside of the county are all in favor of something, you know, but they, they, they got the hopes and.
I mean, we really only.
Spread to their county once.
There you go.
We really only have control of Crawford County in this regard. I mean, we, we can't tell them the owner or Shelby how they, how they live their life.
I think in our last quarter, try to count our four county meeting, I think that was, the interest was there.
Because they were asking.
They wanted the draft, they wanted to move forward with it. Actually, I'm surprised some of them haven't beat us to it already.
Yeah, good point.
Maybe they have, they just haven't heard about it.
Well, Shelby would have, but they've been pretty busy.
Do we know what our fee income is from those, the tower fund?
Uh, the current one we are, you, what do we just, I, you know, what do we?
Thirty-seven. Eighty-seven, it brings in, uh, just try a fifty grand a year right now.
Fifty thousand.
And, um, when U S L comes on, um, see they had sixty months, I believe it was, or fifty months, so that's about five years, which are probably two and a half years through, so when they come on that way, another, um, twenty grand a year.
You know, and we, and we keep saying fire, I'd like to emphasize the point that this is for our volunteers, the emergency services and fire, EMS. You know, I mean, they're, they're all critical to our infrastructure of saving lives and property in Crawford County. And, you know, just like we talked about payroll, you know, showing your appreciation is probably a little bit overdue.
The volunteers.
The volunteers.
Like the paramedics.
Yeah, no, not, not the pain, they're, they're already paid, but, I mean, I think for the volunteer services, you know, I mean, maybe that's how we need to explain it. Volunteer.
And, and the, the explanation is from the Iowa code.
So we have enough direction for Colin to?
Colin, you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the changes, I'll get it sent out this week.
Boxed.
Next week's agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Okay, so.
Very important as you talked about all your mental health stuff, I can't find people, I can't figure out a way to match it. These people are for, since Ben Franklin, I've been tasked with providing the service for your charge.
I absolutely know.
All the taxpayers, so Ben Franklin was the first all-of-year fighter.
That's because he started a fire.
He started insurance company to help fund the volunteer fire service.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table that until next week, discuss, uh, funding for.
Carpel.
Carpel, I wonder now I should say that.
I thought it said.
Please file software for the county attorney's office.
So I have, uh, I'm triple split today, so we have a motion day for district court and for magistrate court and then we had, I have stuff in front of you guys, so I have a hearing eleven thirty, so I have to be kind of super brief, but it's just to discuss. I want to bring it to your attention, there's no action to be taken right now. So our office uses a software to track all of our cases papersly called Pro Law. It costs, uh, roughly seven, maybe eight grand a year annually for the software. And it tracks anything that happens in a criminal case, it goes and it, it logs, we can run. That presentation I gave last week, all those numbers were generated from our software system. It's indispensable for how we conduct business at the county attorney's office. Carpel is that program in the cloud. Right now we have two servers, we have a, uh, they have a server that of course handles all our information. And then we have an off-site server in case ours crashes, because if ours crashes, we need a backup. And so those are physical backups right now. Carpel is kind of the next gen of what we have called Pro Law and like I said, it's cloud-based. And, um, right now, there are roughly forty counties, fifty counties that use Pro Law. But I actually don't, I don't know that, I don't know that number. What I do know is that of the Iowa counties that use Pro Law, all but seven have switched to Carpel. So Crawford County is one of seven counties using the old version, the physical backup version of this case software. Carpel, again, cloud-based, next gen, um, it's one of those things that the Pro Law people tell us, they plan on continuing services with Pro Law into the future as long as they can. But when it comes, becomes not economically feasible for them to service, the Pro Law program, it will cease and they'll shove everyone who wants to be part of this software to the cloud version. It qualifies for ARPA funding. And it is a thirty-eight thousand dollar initial startup. And it's a ten thousand dollar annual fee, so up about twenty-five hundred dollars roughly on an annual fee, but it has that thirty-eight thousand dollar startup cost. I did not budget this, it didn't show up in my budget. But I want to put this on your radar, I know you guys have had a lot of discussions on what to do with ARPA funds. I want to toss my name in that ring for some funding for this program. Now, she, the, our Pro Law, um, representative, Jessica Trobot, was available today to give you the details, because she of course is the representative, she has all the details you would ever need. I unfortunately don't have time to get her on the phone and, and, and do that, so I'll get back on the agenda when she's available on the thirty-first. She'll be available, so I'll get back on the agenda, I'll have her available by Zoom or phone um, to answer any more particular questions before I have, but I did want to get this out, uh, in front of you guys for consideration. I think it's, it's, uh, a bit of future-proofing, it's kind of the trend of this software anyway. And considering that we have ARPA funds that qualifies for, I feel like now's the time to do it rather than to put that, if we have an opportunity to, to get that off the tax, the taxpayers, I want to, I want to strike that.
I would like to, uh, consider getting our ARPA committee, the department heads together again, maybe the end of this week, first of next week. Kind of see where we're at now with the funds, that we have a better number for the bathroom and number now for the, uh, technology and kind of see where we're at and kind of see what monies we'd have available, so, uh, so we can get together again and see what we spent, what's been, uh, promised, what's been approved and see what we're going to have left. And then you could present that to the ARPA committee and then they could bring it forward to the supervisors.
Perfect, and my time has run out, uh, thank you guys, I got to.
Thanks, Colin.
How long does that cost as an annual fee?
Yes.
Eight grand.
It's about, about eight grand. Yeah, that's what we pay already for Pro Law.
And this will be ten for this new program.
Plus the thirty-eight dollars.
But it's just that startup cost that's going to be the.
Yeah, and I did not, I did not budget for the increased annual costs because it's not approved by you guys yet and I did not budget for the thirty-eight thousand initial cost because only because I've approved it. But I don't know if you will, but I do want to put it on your radar.
Okay.
All right, thank you guys.
Thanks, Colin. Bring Jake back.
What's that?
Bring Jake back.
Do we have, there he is, Jake, please present yourself up here to the board and let's get this thing taken care of.
Yeah, everything looks pretty solid to me as far as, um, the SARP is concerned. Um, I didn't really have any qualms or issues with what was being proposed here, so, um, okay. I wasn't sure who to get that to. So, um, is there any, any additional questions?
I have none, if you think everything's in there, it's covered or we don't have a bunch of change.
You're good, I'm good. Yeah, you know, like I said, the only thing, and I mentioned this when we were initially talking about, is our dates, okay? Um, I don't know if there's a liability associated with those dates or not, but.
Corey kind of answered that question, I think he wants to be able to do his order, order of materials immediately.
What we'll do is once we get the, uh, other one, we'll have them start down there and do the concrete and start there so we can keep that moving along instead of finishing the.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to accept the proposal from.
I'll make that motion.
What's Corey's company name?
Advanced Communications.
Advanced Communications, thank you.
Seven dollar money in or?
Can you hand me that so I can? Fifty-one, nine, twenty-two from Advanced Communication Services.
Corey Gal, second Jean's motion.
What, second Jean, he had a second, okay, so we got motion from Ms. Hayden, second, Mr. Dozart. Oh, and this is, is this a resolution or is this just a, just, no, okay, all in favor, stayed so by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose no, motion carried.
All right.
Thank you, Corey.
Thanks, Corey.
Yeah, thanks, Corey.
Can I just bring kind of caveat about Colin was proposing a little bit, one thing to note is if he does go to the cloud, that removes the infrastructure associated with having this to support it. I mean, it's the one ground of servers, it's out there, so we don't necessarily pay for a server.
How to hit for him, you mean?
Yeah.
So what does that mean to us?
Does that save us money?
How much would that?
That, that twenty-five hundred dollars that he was talking about between the ten thousand and the eight, that's going to be, probably save more.
Really?
Going that route, because you won't have to maintain that server and you won't have to rotate it every couple of years.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I'll save this stuff in the cloud, when it starts raining, what's going to happen, so.
You know, I haven't heard anything yet, but I'll get back to you.
No, I just, I just always.
What do we have?
Worry about that stuff, just.
Disappearing.
Out there, it kind of depends on how it's set up as far as security is concerned. Um, if it's something that we're leasing, then it's on your security. If it's something that we're doing, I say Pro Law, in this case, they're more on the backend responsible for that overhead, so.
So basically what you're saying is the cloud.
Is that for me, Matt?
Somebody else has got a lot of security environment that.
Flags are for you.
We just.
Yeah.
Remote, didn't want to.
Now, there's.
Did you sign the back too?
You can lease a server and then you are responsible for all of that, but ultimately, like if you're doing the software situation, they're generally responsible like front, since Exchange, Microsoft Exchange as an example, it's a lot of people house that email server on premise. They're getting hammered hard regarding security issues because it has to be presented and some of these individuals aren't as savvy with that, those processes and things, and that's where officers, fire comes in, is, you know, worrying about that stuff, there's all the overheads with Microsoft. Okay?
Thank you, Jake, anybody? Citizens input. Ladies?
I had to say, stay, stay for a second.
Yes.
I couldn't, like, we're still out there, she passed away.
Oh, yeah.
Have we got Dave's phone number? Yeah, Dave's is not there.
Right, it's getting worked on.
Well, yeah, we're working on that and whatnot.
Um, there was something, the other day, last.
Getting people that are.
There's quite a few other things that need updated, so.
We're working on it, we, 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 we do know the significance of that board this year in particular.
Letting them update accordingly, um, because they know more about their rotation and things along the lines of the changes.
Email the entire board of supervisors. A website and they just email each of us individually.
I think interview individually.
Yeah, individually. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, when you mentioned about the pipeline and about impacting Suswick and Edison, don't forget Buckgrove. It goes within a fourth of a mile from Buckgrove's limits. And I actually, Karen, I moved on and talked to the city council when you guys first drafted the ordinance. They're very supportive of the ordinance and were willing to, um, write a letter of support to you about it, but then, you know, things just happened and so they, so they're kind of up in the air as far as that goes, but I just wanted to say, don't forget them.
Thank you.
They are right on the border of it.
Yeah, and I do know that, I just, when I mentioned them too, that those are actually growing communities and so they're, to me, they, they didn't hold a higher priority. They just, it's easier to argue for them.
I understand, I just want to make sure you're aware of that. And then the half a mile, did you realize that the airport is a half a mile up in this pipeline?
Oh, yes, I do.
That's from our property, so it's, I mean, yeah, so just, I mean, if you guys are thinking, I know you're expanding, I think, more south, but if you ever want to go west, you're going to be in trouble.
Yeah, and you, and, and we don't know where we're wanting to go, I mean, that's, that's the thing, is we like to have the opportunity to develop our economic in particular infrastructure at our will, that somebody.
Oh, I understand a hundred percent, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. And then I had something else, oh, when Steve was talking about, just to straighten facts out, when he's talking about the Mississippi incident with the pipeline, actually, Seisma came in and evaluated, that no changes have been made yet, but they said that definitely they need to make changes in the safety arena, and that's why they're saying it's going to be until twenty twenty-four, until they're able to get their recommendations out there. So no changes have been made from that incident, but they realize they need to be made, so just to.
I think, I was, and I, I'm talking to him in other discussions, I think he'd actually brought that up here.
Okay, so I just, because he said today that, um, they changed regulations, it was like, not yet, okay.
Ms. Hayden.
And, and that's part of the, I think, problem for us is when they say that we don't have to worry about safety because they've already got safety in place and that for us, seven ordinance that talks about safety, we're duplicating federal and state safety and they really don't have them, they're just having this fall on things that they really haven't changed, but they're, so that's kind of.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it, I mean, they've realized there's a deficiency because it was such, I mean, there's only five thousand miles of CO2, so it's not one of their high priorities like the pipelines.
But wouldn't you think, knowing that, that for a county wanting to put in extra state or county safety that would be allowed to, knowing that they are lacking in what they have, uh.
You would think, but I think they want to get it in before those regulations come down, which, you know.
Just to.
Just your grandfather did, anyway, um and then the last thing that I have, just a personal thing, I agree with you, with as far as the volunteers, a volunteer is a volunteer. And it doesn't, I don't, personal opinion, I don't think it should matter if they're renting or they own a home, I think that you should give it to, I don't know how to do it, I don't have the answers, but just a personal opinion.
I had an idea, you know, which would be to take the funds from the tower and just give it to each local uh fire uh entity and then distribute that to everybody that shows up rather than attach it to a tax credit, but that.
My only reservations with that is we have some fire departments that are, just seem to be continuously at war with their city councils.
So I, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the answer.
Trying to make it as fair and as.
Yeah, I'm fighting the fire right next to.
I'm just.
And that's, you know, that just causes a lot of bodies doing this because, so that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, I understand, but I just made one happy and you made another, you know, so I don't.
I don't want everyone like we're, we're making pay them, do we leave?
I would, I would challenge you, I I respect that and I I believe you're you're correct. This is something that we can do as a body, a supervisor, we can, taxes is one thing we can dictate, but pay, but I open to any suggestions to. They never bring that other side, bring them other people into it, so.
Yeah.
There's no doubt, they're just.
Beauty could help those younger guys incentivize, I know it's not much, but to look at my home in Crawford.
I'm just going through the roster and chartering, and I'm trying to take.
Right.
I don't want anybody trying to think who rents their own, the majority in charter own, I don't.
And I'm sure Dennison probably has more volunteers that have a chance where they're renting or still living with family.
I was thinking of the guy.
Bigger communities anyway, so last week, Manila might have a little bit more of that.
I think we're on the right track.
Something is better than nothing, but I just, I mean.
What I didn't want to do is once again, get so far and then we can't agree on it, and so we get nothing done, so.
I agree a hundred percent, I just, I don't envy your job.
We're always working to try to make it a better place. Anybody else, Mr. Munt? Nothing, Mr. Gaskell, you're still there?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay, well, I would, is there anything else to bring for the board? I uh.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Good news for time, but.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll be here.
Anyone reach out to you? Yet either.
Was that today?
No, I don't know, I haven't.
Jean, is it today?
What?
Meditation station or is it next week?
Uh, it's next week.
Next week.
Yep, nope.
And they just go, and it's, they do it up in the.
Right.
In the host, host or in the school, in that little conference room they have.
So we always had a comment, but.
Go on the administrative side.
Ty, did you get that email?
Forget my time next week comes, just tell me next week.
H R one, Bill, do everyone, did you get that? Did you get an email from Steve Holt when he said that I sent everyone?
I went to look for that.
H R one, and I never, I didn't get it, and I just thought, well, maybe I knew, but that's why I didn't get it.
Uh, it's a little machine, you notice I just kind of look at mine once in a while.
I did not get it.
I don't.
That's why, I was, that's when I was looking at several things, I were, talking about the emails, Collins even, I don't remember ever getting that.
Yep.
I remember a call, I remember Collins.
What hap, what used to happen with me is I would say I wouldn't get these things, then when I walked in the courthouse, all of a sudden it'd be like all this stuff is just coming in like, like it's locked.
What, what, that means? I was hoping that.
Okay.
I've had, if you have problems, but don't, maybe you can be used there to, there, just have Jake look out and make sure that.
But if nobody got an email from Steve Holt, then he did send one out.
He's probably using our old emails or something, but.
I wonder if that happened.
They should still forward to you though, except for you, of course, they would not forward, because you didn't have an old one. And I don't know if the.
But people's email address changed?
Yeah, they used to be dot gov and that stuff. Yeah, it used to be dot org and now it's, yes, dot Iowa. So if you have that old one there for a while, that would.